...the Dasis of Beaumont. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving Father, we come before you and we ask your abundant blessings upon our City Council, upon all the men and women who serve in our community. And as this new council gathers with newly elected members, we pray, Lord, in this Easter season for your Holy Spirit to come upon them. Give them the gifts of the Holy Spirit that are promised to us, a spirit of wisdom and understanding, spirit of counsel and fortitude, the spirit of knowledge and piety. Fill them with the spirit of the fear of the Lord, and may they help each of us to build up this great community. Bless and protect our young people, keep them safe from any harm, any evil. Protect our community and all those who serve. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. And may Almighty God bless you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Present.
And Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
All right, today we have three proclamations, one recognition, and four presentations. First, we're gonna have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Stroke Awareness Month, and accepting will be Mr. Cord Tucker, Christus St. Elizabeth Stroke Coordinator, and all the guests. And we'll get a picture. There you go. Hopefully I never see y'all in any capacity. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, that's all. We can lean in for picture here now. Y'all can all come get in the picture.
Hey, ready? And one, two, three. One, two. Got it. We're gonna do another one. Don't move too quick. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being here today and taking time out to recognize this. I'm going to be fast with this, pun intended for those of y'all that don't know. BFAST is our acronym for Recognizing Stroke Symptoms, so balance, eyes, face, arms, speech, and time to call 911. About every 30 seconds in the United States, someone has a stroke, and about every three minutes, someone passes because of a stroke. So this is a very serious illness, and I want to remind everyone, if you or loved one or anybody experiences any of these symptoms, to call 911 immediately. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as National Preservation Month, and accepting will be Mrs. Jennifer Trinbuth, Jefferson County Historic Commission Coordinator. So please come up, and if any of your members are here and would like to join you, have them come up.
Really ready to do this, but I will.
Okay.
Okay, if you'll stay there one. One, two, three. Make sure I can see everybody. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
As you see, we've got a number of our appointees here with me. We are appointed by the Jefferson County Commissioners Court to preserve, promote, and protect the history of Jefferson County. This is about half of our appointees, and we equal about 3,500 volunteer hours a year in Jefferson County, working on different preservation projects. So I'm just really proud to be part of this group, and everybody deserves a huge congratulations for all the work that they do. Thank y'all very much for this honor.
Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and accepting will be Mrs. Robin Troy with Neil Troy Advertising, and anyone that is with you.
Hi, I don't have anything to give y'all, but I'm gonna come shake everybody. Yeah. Hey, bud, how are you?
Congratulations.
Oh, Lord. How y'all gonna launch the picture? You gonna get up there, too? Thank you.
One, two, three. Got it.
Mayor, you don't have to read these anymore, do you?
No, ma'am.
Oh, thank goodness, okay. Well, I'm gonna let this gentleman say a few words, and then I have just a minute or two, not even a minute.
Well, I'm Scott Johnson. I go by the road name Pieman. I want to thank you for giving this proclamation. Anytime that you see bikers out there, and they're in a group, odds are they're going to a charity event. The motorcycle ministries around here all reach out and do an enormous amount for the local charities, and they're always welcome, too, because you'll see that when there's a stranded motorist, there's a lot of times that the person that stops to help them is a motorcyclist. But we're vulnerable because we're on two wheels. It's hard to see us, so we really appreciate every effort that you take to take that second look and to make sure that we're safe, because we want to keep you safe, too. Thank you.
So, as you all know, I don't do two wheels. I grew up riding dirt bikes, but I do, I'm very involved in the motorcycle community. And as Representative Teddy Morris Coway Harley Davidson, we want to thank you for this proclamation. We literally want everyone to be safe on the roads, whether you're on two wheels or four wheels, and let's look twice and look twice again, because the most common thing we hear is, hey, I didn't see ya. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have a recognition and honor of Mr. James Smitty Smith with Christus St. Elizabeth Hospital, and accepting will be Mr. Smith with his family and coworkers of St. Elizabeth Hospital. You'll come forward now.
Maybe scooch this way just a little bit. Get everybody in. And one, two, three. Anywhere.
You want me to speak? Okay. We just want to take this time to thank y'all for honoring Smitty. I've only been with HHS, which is the EBS contractor for St. Elizabeth, for about a year now, and this man is family. I'm sorry about the cry. He was crying earlier, but you ask him to do something, he does it. He goes above and beyond, and everybody at Christus knows him by name. If you're in the community and they've been at St. Elizabeth, they've seen him. They're like, Smitty, I've been there, which is a good thing, but he just dedicates his time, and I mean, this man hasn't taken vacation, so we're gonna be doing something for him soon to take him somewhere. Our corporate office will be honoring him on June 6, including the governor's office, the state senate, and the state representatives to dedicate for his 48 years and 28 years with us. I'm gonna let somebody from Christus talk, if that's okay to...
You want to say something first, Smitty? Okay, I know. Come here, buddy. All right, so as they just said, you know, Smitty is the face of Christus when you walk in. From the time he walks in in the morning to the time he leaves in the evening, he's smiling. He can be cleaning the worst mess or can be dealing with the dirtiest patient, and he is gonna be smiling. And that's what we all like about Smitty. We love about Smitty. So 48 years and more to come, and we are so proud of him. And if y'all come in there and y'all want to sit down with him and have a good conversation, he's pretty funny, too, so... But thank y'all very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move into the presentations at this point, and the first one will be from the City of Beaumont Communications.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say good afternoon to all the new council members as well. The Bond Committee is hard at work going over the nearly 3,000 completed community surveys and talking about potential plans for the city. The next committee meeting will be held next Wednesday, May 28, at the Lakeside Center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. During this meeting, the committee will take a deep dive into potential parks, trails, and facilities projects. All meetings are open to the public. If you'd like more information, go to beaumontbonds.com. We're excited to announce the Right Site Program is now underway. Firefighters and EMS personnel are currently being trained on the new program that helps connect non-emergent patients with a telehealth ER doctor on scene. This frees up our ambulances while ensuring patients are directed to the most appropriate care, not just the emergency room. Firefighters and EMS field personnel are being trained over the next three days, and our dispatch will be trained in the early part of June for a complete rollout of the program, so we're excited about that. There's a runoff election coming up. I know that Mayor West knows this. Early voting begins next Tuesday, May 27, runs through June 3, and Election Day is coming up Saturday, June 7. Parents and families, we're excited to invite you to this year's Kids' Summer Camp at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center. If you have children between the ages of five and 12, get ready for a summer full of fun and friendship. Camp runs from June 9 to July 31. There are two awesome sessions. Cost is $150 per child. There is a mandatory orientation coming up on May 31, so mark your calendars for that. We can't wait to see your kids this summer at the Sterling Pruitt. Our city libraries are ready for fun and learning all summer long. Each library location will host a variety of activities for all ages, including storytime, STEAM programs, book clubs, and summer reading programs, scavenger hunts, game clubs, movies, and language classes. There's always something going on, so just stop by the library or check out the Beaumont Public Library's Facebook page and sign up for the newsletter. Registration for the city's Adult Softball League is now open through next Thursday, May 29. Go to teamsideline.com/baumont to sign up there. And finally, the city's annual Juneteenth celebration returns to the Main Street Outdoor Plaza in downtown Beaumont on Saturday, June 14, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. You can join us for live music and cultural performances. Headliner Midnight Star will bring legendary hits like Midas Touch and No Parking on the Dance Floor. It's all free of charge. Just bring your lawn chairs or a picnic blanket, cool off in the tent, and come ready to celebrate Juneteenth with your family and friends. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have three more presentations, and I just asked that... The first one I know is gonna be about 10 minutes. If we can just write down our questions on our pad and let them get through the presentations, so then we can ask whatever questions. So they may be answering the questions in the presentation. So now, we're gonna have a presentation for Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by Patillo, Brown, and Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank y'all for having me here today. If I may go ahead and just kill some of the suspense, it was a clean audit. We can go now, right? Okay. My name is Clayton Rogers. I'm an Audit Manager with Patillo, Brown, and Hill, your outside accounting firm out of Waco, and I'm here to talk about the results of our Fiscal Year 2024 audit and briefly introduce to you the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the city for fiscal year. I appreciate it. So you should all have a copy of the city's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, as well as a couple of extra separate documents that I'll go over. Now, just as a refresher, what we were engaged to do as your auditors is to render an opinion about if the financial statements for the city are materially correct in accordance with accounting principles. And so that doesn't mean that we look at every dollar. We don't look at every transaction. We don't look at every single thing related to the financial process that might be of interest. It's geared toward the financial statements themselves and their accuracy, and there are limitations to the audit. It's not absolute assurance. That would be cost prohibitive, but that it is what we call reasonable assurance, which is a high level of assurance. And I'm happy to report that based on our audit that we just wrapped up, we are able to issue what's called an unmodified opinion on the 2024 financial statements. You would probably know that as a clean opinion, and what that means is that based on our audit and all the audit evidence we gathered, we do believe that these financial statements for the city are materially correct in accordance with accounting principles. I'm not going to go into detail on these couple of other documents, but I wanted to introduce them to you. The separate single audit report, that goes through several separate reports of ours. There's compliance audits that are triggered by the amount of federal and state grant funding that the city expends, and under that single audit, we do a little bit of a deep dive on certain grant programs that the city is expending funds under. And as part of that deep dive, we're looking at certain big compliance requirements that the federal and state granting agencies have attached to it, and ultimately, we render an audit opinion there, again, reasonable assurance for material compliance. And I am happy to report that we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the federal and state grant compliance as well. So two audit opinions, and they were both clean, unmodified opinions, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your auditor. I'm not going to go into detail also on the separate communication letter. There's a number of things, under our professional standards as your auditor, that were required to communicate. We've chosen to do so in writing, and a lot of the verbiage that's in there really is very boilerplate and identical to prior years. In essence, there are a number of things that were required to disclose. If we had uncovered material problems with the financial records, if we had had significant disagreements with management over accounting practices, things of that nature, we'd be required to disclose them to you. Fortunately, I am happy to report that we did not have any significant issues or audit findings to report to you, and so that letter and those reports are very standard and read similar to prior years. So talking about the city's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, I would love, as a CPA, to walk you through every single page of this 150-page document, but I don't want a room full of sleeping people by the end of this. So I'm not going to hit into the detail. However, I am more than happy to go into anything you might have questions about, or if you have questions about the audit process as well. We did meet with the Audit Committee this morning, earlier today, and did go through this document in much more detail and spent some time talking through some of those financial highlights. That being said, there is... I think if there's one thing that really you would take away from looking at this document, it can be looked at both as the ending point of the audit, but also as a starting point and something that you can refer back to. I think one of the things that's most important to understand about this financial reporting and the audit process is that it's not so much about just getting this document together and producing a clean audit, but to me, what's very important is the processes that the city has to get us to this point. This document is, in our auditor's report, it goes into detail that management is responsible for this document and everything that's in it, and our sole responsibility is to audit it in accordance with our professional standards. And I would say that just overall, there's not things in there that I would consider to be surprising. And what I mean by that is that the city's interim financial information, the records that the city is keeping, this is where we derive that from, and really, the things mainly that are, that might stick out are things that either, as a matter of practice, only get adjusted once a year for this document, or it's something where things are budgeted for a little bit differently than how they're actually accounted for on the books, just as a basis of how things are tracked versus how they're reported. But that by us having a clean audit with no written findings, I'd like to take this time also to thank Bridgette and everyone with the city's finance staff. I'm here to tell you that government finance hasn't gotten any easier in the last year, and having multiple setbacks and then staff turnover, there were a lot of challenges that they had to overcome, but they did a fantastic job, being very forthcoming with us, communicating and getting us everything we need, not just having the information, but having it organized and having everything that we needed to be able to complete the audit as smoothly as possible. So ultimately, while there is a lot of detail in here that we could go into and that I'd be happy to talk about, ultimately, I would say that, to me, the biggest takeaway is that this comes from the same place that your monthly financials come from, and that you have... The city has a good finance staff that has put in a lot of work to having systems and processes in place that make having a clean audit not an accident. And so with that, I don't... Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to add anything about the Audit Committee meeting, and I'd be happy to open it up for questions.
Well, I think we all got the books today, so certainly, if you have any questions later, because they're pretty comprehensive, you'll be able to ask them and get answers. But I'll begin with just opening the Florida Council to see if there's any questions. Yes, Councilman Turner?
Not a question, but we know the Audit Committee did lose a member. So at this time, if maybe we could discuss it in the future, I'd probably recommend maybe Cory to replace the World One Councilmember that was already on it, if there's something we could talk about in the future or we can get discussed today.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we can't take action on that today, but it's something we can do in the future, that's correct.
Yeah, we'll just note it as a future agenda item.
Yes, Mayor, if we can get it on the next agenda item, so we can get that committee back shelled up.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Turner. I owe you one.
Any other comments? All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna have a presentation from a consultant with Grow America to review the 2025-20 through 2029 Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Patricia Santa Cruz. I'm a Technical Advisory Services Director with Grow America, and Grow America was engaged by the City of Beaumont to complete and conduct an analysis of your HUD consolidated five-year action and HUD consolidated five-year plan and your annual action plan. Next slide, please. So the City of Beaumont receives Community Development Block Grant Funds and Home Investment Partnership Funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city is an entitlement community. Whoops. The CDB each year, the city receives approximately $1.39 million in CDBG funds and approximately $535,000 in home funds to serve, to provide activities that primarily serve low and moderate income households in Beaumont. These funds provide a variety of activities aimed at affordable housing, economic development, and community development activities. And I just also want to mention that this is a five-year plan. Over the last five years, did an analysis of these funds, and the city has received pretty much level funding of about $1.38 million in CDBG funds each year, about $536,000 in home funds. Next slide, please. So the city must complete a consolidated plan every five years. This consolidated plan assesses your housing, economic, and community development needs through data analysis, stakeholder engagement, and community engagement and participation. This con-plan and needs assessment, it sets the goals and identifies the needs to prioritize funds for your home and CDBG funding over the next five years. Next slide. So this is a little bit about the consolidated planning process. As I mentioned, the City of Beaumont engaged Grow America to conduct a needs assessment. So we do that through a variety of activities, which I'll discuss in the next slide. After assessing those needs, primarily through data, community engagement, and stakeholder engagement, looking at census data and housing data, we set some priorities based on the data analysis of that data that we see, and then we develop a strategy about how the city will go forward to prioritizing and assessing those needs and take into account not only your HUD resources that are available to address these needs, but also other local, state, and regional resources that are identified. Priorities are then identified and proposed, and then goals are set according to those priorities for the next five years about how you're going to use and implement your CDBG and home funds. And that incorporated in this consolidated planning process is going to be your one-year annual action plan. So you've all have... This is the start of your new five years, and included with this consolidated plan will also be your FY 2025 annual action plan and budget that's going to be based on the needs that we've identified through this process. And at the end of the program year, because there's always a lot of reporting when it comes to these federal funds, the city is required to report on their accomplishments that they achieved, based on the goals that they've set for that year, through the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. annual performance and evaluation report. Next slide, please. So this is just a little bit of an overview of the different activities that are undertaken that go into developing the consolidated plan, as I mentioned, research data, meetings with staff, and other community stakeholders, nonprofit organizations, surveys, engagement with the community, receiving public feedback through public hearings, one of which will be held later today, and looking at other city plans and regional initiatives to see, as I mentioned, how are you addressing these needs? Next slide, please. So I'm not going to go over each, the next few slides. Do you talk about the stakeholder input? And the number one, number one thing we learn from stakeholders is that housing is the number one urgent need in this community, lack of affordable housing, homeless, this includes homeless housing, resources for housing, Section 8 vouchers and such. And also, I wanted to mention that a recurring theme that came up was the lack of accessible housing for disabled persons. We also, as part of the stakeholder input and engagement, met with homeless service providers and with your public housing authority. And that's consistent with what we heard, that not only is there lack of affordable housing, but also accessible housing for persons with disabilities. Next slide, yes. Other needs are identified, I'm not going to go through all of these, but food programs, public service activities, bus shelters. Next slide, please. Infrastructure needs came up, sidewalks, street improvements, drainage improvements, code enforcement. And this slide just talks a little bit about, it wasn't all, here's all the needs. The stakeholders also did a really good job of kind of highlighting what the city's recent progress was in addressing needs or a coordinated, or having a coordinated system. Obviously, one of the most, the biggest barrier affecting especially nonprofit organizations and others that are addressing these needs is resources. But wanted to highlight that the city has engaged, you know, developed a City of Beaumont strategic plan for 2023 and 2028. The Park Plan also highlighted the formation of a mayor's homeless coalition, the Fair Housing Summit that was held last year and well-attended not only by HUD but other regional partners to talk about fair housing issues in this community, the creation of the 211 Area Information Center for Southeast Texas, so a one central number where residents can call and get connected to someone that connects them with resources, and also increased coordination between agencies and local government. Next slide. So another part of the needs assessment included a community need survey. So the city initiated this online electronic survey. It was open from October 1st through December 15th, 2024. It was marketed on the city's website and through other public channels. The survey included 25 questions that were related to housing, public service activities, infrastructure, community facilities, economic development, and fair housing. The survey yielded 132 responses with over 300 individual comments. The priorities that were identified as part of this needs assessment survey were housing and type of programs to prioritize to be addressed was home repair, affordable housing, homeless programs and Section 8 programs to address Section 8 vouchers. Obviously, the second highest priority, infrastructure facilities, and then public services, and then finally, economic development was the fourth priority. Next slide. So I'm not going to go over all of the comments, but I just wanted to highlight how really this is with the guidance, the survey was developed with the guidance of Jess Prince here at the City of Beaumont, and she left, we left a lot of areas for open-ended questions. So a lot of the comments did surround housing, but also infrastructure and other needs. Next slide, please. So based on the consolidated plan process that I just discussed, the city is recommending three overarching priorities to guide the use of CDBG and home funds over the next five years. The first one is to provide decent, safe, affordable housing. Second priority is to create suitable living environments. And then the third priority is to provide public services for low to moderate income households. All of these would be identified as high priority needs. And the five-year consolidated plan, which would allow the city to do things under housing like home repair programs, homeownership assistance with your home funds, infrastructure projects, community facility projects, code enforcement, and other projects that will provide neighborhood enhancement like demolition. And then the public services will allow the city to provide public services to programs that are just going to affect and serve low to moderate income families in general, or could be targeted to special needs populations like homeless services or services that assist seniors or childcare and youth. Also want to mention on, for this one, we don't, economic development was the fourth priority. It will be included in your consolidated plan and we're recommending as a lower priority. But if, in the future, you all wanted to fund an economic development activity, including that as a priority, even a lower priority will allow you the flexibility to do so. Next slide, please. So this is your annual action plan. So in, as required by HUD, the city is, after identifying the needs through the consolidated planning process, they are to put out a proposed budget for a minimum period of 30 days. At the time this proposed budget was put out, which was April 17th, HUD had not announced the FY 2025 allocations yet. Those were just announced last week on May 13th. So these, this annual action plan budget is based on the priorities identified in the consolidated plan, but it was based on the 2024 allocations. With the HUD allocations that were just announced last week, the City of Beaumont's CDBG and home funds pretty much stayed at level funding. There was a slight 2.7% decrease in the budget from 2024 to 2025, year over year, so very slight. And so, in the final action plan budget, these activities may be, the budgets may be modified just a little bit. And I wanted to note that in CDBG, the budget does include projected $2,000 of program income. So that's going to be the difference between what the HUD allocation is and what this budget will be in the annual action plan. And the next slide. So this is just the annual action plan and process for 2025. It's as required by HUD, the city's required to have two public hearings, one before you announce what your proposed allocations, how you're going to award the funds, and one after. So the first public hearing, formal public hearing, was April 8th. But as I mentioned, we did a lot of engagement before that to get, before we got to the annual action plan. But officially, the first public hearing was April 8th. As required by HUD, we put out the budget and proposed activities to be allocated for 30 days, beginning April 17th. The second public hearing will take place later today, this afternoon, as part of this agenda. And then on or after that public hearing, City Council can consider the FY 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and the FY 2025, you know, action plan. All plans are statutorily due to HUD, no later than August 16th. If you don't get your plan in by that day, they, you don't get funding for that year. The city, normally, the normal process is that they submit their plan by May 15th, since you all have a July 1st start date. But HUD announced their allocations a little late this year, just last week, so you have a little more time to get in, to get your final con-plan and action plan and your federal funding application to HUD, which I believe at your next agenda item, you will, at the next City Council meeting, you will be looking at the actual, you know, action plan for adoption. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have questions?
So the money that you're awarded, is it, I mean, do they look at how you allocate it and say, we want to see, you know, this much dedicated to different things? How does that work?
Yeah, so a little bit on the budget side, under CDBG, you get two federal funds with these HUD funds, community development block grant. We call those the most flexible funds, right? Because you can do a variety of different activities, community development, code enforcement, public services, housing, supportive housing activities. There are certain restrictions on those. So 15% of your budget is limited to public service activities. Those are going to be activities where you're funding nonprofit organizations, giving them funds to support the community. And then 20% of your funds are also limited to it for administration. So you have to stay within those caps. In addition, at least 70% of the funds that you're using in totality for all the other activities need to be aimed at activities that are going to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. So most, a lot of activities in CDBG do, are targeted towards low and moderate, but there are certain activities like clearance and demolition. That meets what's called an elimination of slum and blight national objective, so that doesn't fall under that 70%. So those are sort of the parameters that you are, the guardrails that you have for your, for your CDBG funds. And that is why, because you can do a variety of things with these, HUD asks you to conduct a community needs assessment every five years to say, hey, we can do all of these things, how should we target it? And so that's where, you know, not only the data that we're looking at and other resources becomes really important, but also input from residents and stakeholders to say, hey, here are our needs, and we're looking at what other resources are there available in this community to address them and how they should be prioritized. So I don't know if that answers your question. That's sort of the guardrails. Home is just housing activities, the home funds that you get, about $536,000 a year. It's only surrounding for home. So CDBG is more of the flexible one that HUD says. You have to figure out what you're going to do with them based on what the needs are.
And you said low income, but what about no income? I mean, is it something that can-
Sure, yeah. A lot of these activities will.
... homeless situation with?
It can. So under the homeless category, you could use CDBG funds to support a homeless shelter, right? Or to rehab or construct a homeless shelter. Public services is also a good avenue for homeless funds, so provide money to service providers that are serving the homeless and to support those organizations as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hilliard?
I have a question. You brought up that we're behind on housing. That seems to be a problem. How far with, I know that we have a lot of apartment complexes that are being built. How far behind are we on housing?
It's pretty significant. You also face the, you know, natural disasters in this area that not only so displace people that are low income and non-low income. So I don't have a total number that you're behind, but it's just like almost any other community. It's significant. The Public Housing Authority has over 3,000 people on their waiting list for either vouchers or public housing, so that gives you some idea of the need.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Turner?
I noticed you said a 2.7% decrease. So we're going to get a 5% increase, did you?
No, so I did, they were now, it was announced last week, and I can give you the final numbers, but it just went down slightly. It went down by like $13,000 from your FY '24 for CDBG and by like $4,000 in home. So it wasn't significant. I'd call that level funding. But, you know, everybody's looking, when it comes to federal funds, towards the 2026 budget battle that's going to happen in Washington, D.C. So good for the next year. These funds will be for July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Councilman Durio?
You said there were 3,000 people on the waiting list. That's just for Beaumont?
It's just for Beaumont, it's the Beaumont Housing Authority.
Thank you very much. All right, the last presentation we have today will be by the Parks Master Plan, presentation by Half Consulting and also our director, Kenneth Righette.
All right, excuse me. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're excited to embark on this journey to shape the future of our cherished city parks and recreational spaces. Our parks are the heart and soul of our community, serving as gathering places and vibrant hubs for recreation for individuals and families alike. Looking ahead, we recognize the need to ensure that our parks continue to thrive, evolve, and meet the diverse needs of our dynamic population. In February 2024, the City Council approved Resolution Number 24048 to collaborate with Half Consultants on the development of a Parks Recreation and Green Space Master Plan for Beaumont. Following this, on July 30th, 2024, the Council adopted Resolution Number 24179, appointing members to the Parks Recreation and Green Space Steering Committee. The Steering Committee was established to represent the community's voice and validate the collective interest of residents in the master plan's development. Throughout the planning process, numerous meetings took place involving Half Consultants, the Steering Committee, focus groups. Open houses were held for citizens to share their feedback, an online survey, and staff involvement. The resulting master plan will serve as a strategic framework for the future development, enhancement, and management of our park system. Over the past several months, city staff has worked closely with community stakeholders, local committees, and external consultants to thoroughly review and update the plan, ensuring it meets the current and future needs of our growing city. Our focus is on creating accessible, inclusive, and sustainable spaces that benefit not only today's residents, but future generations. The updated plan embodies a shared vision for the recreational future of our city, which we view as essential. I'd like to introduce Julian Salasporus, an urban planner with Half Consultants and part of his team. They're here to talk about and give a brief slideshow on exactly what our Parks Master Plan is. I think it's one of the best things for our city right now, because parks are really the future of most cities, as well as our downtown.
Thank you, Kenneth, for that introduction. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Julian Salasporus. I'm the project manager for Parks for All Beaumont's Playbook for Parks, Green Space and Recreation. And I could not be more excited to be in front of you guys today. And I know some of you, this is your first day, so this is a really good plan to start your tenure with the City Council. Like Kenneth said, I want to thank a lot of people who helped get this plan to fruition. We had Kenneth Righette, Demi Eingman, June Ellis, Chris Boone. We also had Tracy Kinnick helping us a lot with the communications for the plan and for the public engagement, and as well as Jimmy Neal on the recreation side. I'm going to start a quick presentation, it's about, maybe about eight to 10 minutes. We have a Q&amp;A afterwards and discuss if we need to. So why plan now? So the purpose of this plan is to really promote a vision for a continued development of a vibrant, healthy, and safe park system. The park plan is going to help identify park and recreation needs, guides for future expenditures like park and recreation facilities, programs, operation and maintenance of the departments, and administration of both departments as well. The plan is also going to assist in helping preserve green space in the city, which is very vital to the environment that you guys live in, the beautiful environment that y'all live in. And at the end of the day, this plan is going to help guide both Parks departments for the next five to 10 years, so that's why it's so important to plan right now. I was able to even take this photo that is on the screen, the very first day I was in a Beaumont park. We had our kickoff meeting, and I went and played disc golf at Terrell Park at Sunrise, and even met Kenneth out there that morning before we'd actually formally met. This was my introduction to y'all's park system, and it's nothing short of beautiful. And so it was really a pleasure to work with you guys and the residents to get this plan across the line. Our master plan process was about 12 months. We started with an existing conditions and needs assessment, moved into public engagement and listening to the community and their needs, and then moved into recommendations and implementation in fall of 2024, and had report production going on this spring. With the existing conditions assessment, I'm also here today with Emily Barker, a colleague of mine that worked on the plan as well. She was integral in not only the existing conditions assessment, but the documentation that you guys have today to see the plan. So we were able to walk all facilities, and when I say walk, I mean, we walked every corner of every single park and facility in your city to assess the current state of things. After we were done with that, moving into public engagement, we had the opportunity to meet with over 600 residents over the course of the public engagement for the plan through two community meetings, three focus groups at the very beginning of the kickoff, and then, like Kenneth mentioned, we had our 14-member committee that helped us throughout the plan as well. Some of the highlights of the, keep pressing buttons here. Some of the highlights of the community engagement overview was the Fourth of July celebration, where we were able to go out and tell folks about the survey, which we had a very, very successful survey. And then we had a public open house at the Lakeside Center in November 2024. And then those focus groups, like I mentioned, were at the beginning, we met with local officials- We met with local officials and, and city organizations. We met with sports and recreation groups and then some nonprofit groups as well. And those were all highly attended and helped us really formulate our idea for this plan at the beginning of the process. So some things that we heard through the community engagement, some of those top priorities for parks were improving the existing park facilities that we already have here in Beaumont, improving picnic areas for public gathering, and create more active and recreation opportunities. Through the survey, we were even able to identify those favorite park activities and amenities. And that table will highlight those top responses and the facilities that would support those activities and then the current facilities or events that the city of Beaumont currently offers as well. So this is a good starting point to see what the community was looking for, their wants and needs for the plan. The Steering Committee was a very dedicated group of individuals. We met three times. Our first kickoff envisioning meeting was in August of 2024. We then met in November of 2024 with our initial findings from all those assessments and drafted the goals and recommendations. And I, I think we had our meeting scheduled for three hours that day and we went over because we were in such a great conversation about these goals and recommendations that I'm going to go through in a moment. But it really started with the Steering Committee pointing us in the right direction. We just met with them last April for the last meeting with them and we presented the draft plan, which they all gave their recommendation for. And we even got to meet at, twice at the Nature Park Center, the Nature Center in Terrell Park, which was really special. That building is really beautiful. All right. So some of the assessments, when we're looking at the total acreage, parkland acreage for the city of Beaumont, the level of service, the National Recreation and Parks Association sets out guidelines and averages for all communities in the country. So as you can see on the right there, the total park system average for all communities in the country is 10.6 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. Total park system averages for communities 100,000 to 250,000, only seven, seven acres per 1,000 residents. Where does Beaumont stand? Beaumont's at 10.6 acres per 1,000 residents. So you guys are just above the median, creeping into the upper quartile. What this table kind of depicts for us is yes, we, we have a lot of park acreage in the city, but you'll see some surplus and deficits in those different types of park classifications. So the two being in the deficit at the top, neighborhood and community parks, we now have recommendations for those classifications to kind of decrease that deficit a little bit. And it's great that you guys already have two community parks on your community investment plan already slated to go before, build before 2030. So that's going to alleviate some of the pressure there. And then we have some recommendations for the neighborhood parks as well. So in, in all in all, you guys have a lot of parkland acreage for a city of your size. Some other key findings from the assessments, the current, the city currently has a nine-mile trail deficit. Many parks lack restrooms, shade, trails, and ADA compliant features. There's a high need for more programming and event spaces. We actually had a really cool idea during the Steering Committee. We were thinking of an event space or a amphitheater or a performance stage of some kind in every single ward in Beaumont so that every neighborhood can have a chance to use those types of spaces. And we heard a lot through focus groups and surveys that people were wanting things like that. So there's also an opportunity to use parks as tools for improving the health outcomes. In our plan, we had a health analysis assessment done as well that details kind of some areas that are in need of some park investment. All right. So through all that engagement, all of the talking, all of the conversations that we had with everyone in the town, we came up with the four goals. These were really steering committee-driven, survey-driven, community-driven goals from the residents of Beaumont, starting with goal one, park system investments, park system access, recreational programming, and operations and maintenance. I'm going to go through these goals and even highlight some of the actions that are tied to some of these objectives. So the hierarchy of the plan will have four goals. It'll have a number of objectives tied to each goal and then a number of actions or recommendations tied to each objective. We came up with about 80 actions in total for the Parks Master Plan. The first goal is investing in Beaumont's park system to become recognized as a regional standard for great parks. What I saw that first day in Beaumont was some of the most beautiful park areas I'd ever seen where I was joking with folks on the Steering Committee that the grass was like carpet. It was so lush and green. And so I wanted to make sure that y'all's park system is not only aesthetically pleasing, but taken to the next level with facilities and amenities. So these objectives are developing character elements that beautify and distinguish Beaumont's parks, reinvesting in existing parks and facilities, exploring opportunities to expand the park system. And number four, transform Terrell Park into a regional destination. I think it already is somewhat of a regional destination, has really big events there, a lot of programming, but we were looking to take that to another level. And I'll kind of highlight some of those upgrades that we came up with for Terrell Park in a moment. Goal number two, Beaumont's parks will be safe, comfortable, and accessible for all. This one really came out as one of the first leading ideas that folks had for the park system. It was, yes, I want to upgrade my existing park in my neighborhood, but I really need it to be safe and comfortable and accessible for my kids and my family. So this goal is really tied around developing park safety standards, promoting equitable investment and distribution of park amenities, and design and maintain park amenities that cater to all types of abilities and diverse needs. Some of the actions in this goal too are, are park safety strategies, covered spaces like pavilions, accessible playgrounds, and accessible amenities. Goal number three, encourage healthy lifestyles and social interactions through community events and programming. This one is really about bringing, bringing, we had a lot of focus on youth. It's, it's not just about bringing the youth together, it's bringing the community together through social interactions and community events and programming. And so providing a variety of programs and events for all ages, providing programming that connects with nature. Nature came up a lot, especially while we were down there in, in Terrell Park and seeing cattail marsh and the birding and, and all sorts of stuff. And, and nature play is a picture that you see with that kid jumping on the logs as becoming a very popular alternative to playgrounds nowadays. And number three, the objective, collaborate with community partners to deliver meaningful park experiences like demonstration gardens and things of that nature. Goal number four, this one is to make sure that all the other goals can, can be accomplished. We got to make sure that we have supporting our efficient operations and administration of both Parks Departments, the Recreation and the Parks and Greens, Parks and Green Space Department. So expand, expanding public awareness of Beaumont's parks and recreation facilities is an objective here, enhancing administrative practices and developing park guidelines. All right. So once we got through the goals, our team and I were really impressed by yours current community investment plan projects that you guys already have slated for parks, recreation and facilities on there. What we did was took the liberty to create a new list, a, what we're calling a plan-identified CIP list. And so we have about 20 proposed projects grouped by priority on there. And you'll notice in the plan, those are also categorized by if they affiliate with the Beaumont Strategic Plan, if they came out of the public survey in the Parks Master Plan, and there's some other components to see how they align with you guys already having quite a strategic plan going for the city. And so you're going to see things like this in the CIP list, like adding security systems to all park properties. You guys have already started that with the Real-Time Crime Center and some of the parks. And I think adding that extra security presence in some of the others is going to kind of alleviate some of those pressures that we heard about access and safety. The big one on there is signature upgrades to Terrell Park, creating a master signage and branding plan to really create a new look for the park system. And the list goes so on and so forth. Another one on there that was very important from our conditions assessment, after seeing all the parks in the park system, was replacing some of the playgrounds. And we do unfortunately have a list of about 12 of them that need to be replaced almost immediately. So those are the CIP plan projects that we identified. And then we're finally getting to plan implementation. And what Half is not in the business of is just handing you guys a parks plan and saying good luck. We want to make sure that we are here for you guys after this. And what we've already started to do is work with, Half has our own grants and funding resources team that we reached out to about two months ago to start looking at some initial findings for you guys to really get this plan kicked off and running. And when I look at it, we've got a great parks plan. We've got a bond that's going to go on later this year, hopefully, that has park investments tied to it. And then we've got funding resources and some guidance from Half that will hopefully get the ball rolling on some of these big projects. And some of them are, are small, but we don't want to make, we want to make sure that you guys are set up for the future and that this plan gets executed in the next five to 10 years. So plan to implementation is like, you know, guiding decision-making for new parks, it's supporting future bond conversations, it's keeping the community engaged as projects move forward. Community engagement doesn't stop with this plan. It can continue to go. And I think even just hearing the, the bond survey and how many responses, it sounds like Beaumont is ready for some park investments and they're really, they're really invested in that. So I think, oh, I'm gonna, yeah. That was kind of the conclusion of my presentation. I'm now going to run through a few slides of Terrell Park. We created some renderings for you guys. We debuted these at the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and we're really excited about this. And I think even some people, Kenneth had told us, some people have been reaching out for some donations already for the park after they had seen this already to get the, get this started. So hope this comes up clear for everybody. I'm just going to kind of spend a few seconds on these and move on. I have a few of them. But what's really cool is we're creating two, kind of a new entrance for the, the park on the south end in this kind of teardrop. If you're looking at this, the golf course is to your left, the cattail marsh is to, to your north, those stables are on the south there. So that grand entrance, one of the biggest components of this concept plan is a lookout tower in the center of the park itself. You can kind of see the Nature Center off over there to the left. That's an existing building. But we wanted to create a focal point for this park, something that is going to wow people and keep them coming back. And that is something that you could go on to the top of overlooking the entire park. We heard a lot of birders going crazy about this idea, but we wanted to really elevate the experience of Terrell Park. And so we came up with some of these perspectives for you guys. Splash pads, new playgrounds, labyrinth walk, pickleball courts. That's the existing basketball pavilion there. And one of the coolest things I can kind of depict in this picture that we created was, I'll even start here, is anywhere you park in Terrell Park in this concept plan will give you a different experience based on where you're entering. And so there'll be educational signage that you can kind of see in that yellow cropping to the left underneath the yellow shade, yellow sails. There's kind of like a monument signage there. And if you parked in one spot, you might get the history of Beaumont. If you parked in the next parking spot, you might get the ecological history of Terrell Park. You might get birding education. And so we're trying to create a different experience for folks. And, and another focal point is the amphitheater there in the park as well. So that concludes my presentation and I'm open for questions as well.
Any questions? One I have is just, did you, were y'all able to evaluate usage of the parks and do any?
As in like how many people are using said parks? Sometimes, we did not in this plan. Sometimes our project teams have used trail counters to see if people are using parks. But when I did my conditions assessment, I could kind of tell what parks weren't, were and were not being used. There were some conversations the Steering Committee had about Lefler Park up in the north. Hey, I don't know if anybody goes there. Do we need to close it down? Our project team came back with kind of a recommendation about park conversions, how to lower investment in parks, maybe not getting rid of them, but we came up with some recommendations, even not based on, we didn't know exactly what parks aren't being used, but just in general. So, yes, sir.
Councilman Turner?
This question may be for staff and not particularly the consultant. Have we kind of looked at price-wise what, you know, maybe a national average is or maybe what like-size cities are budgets compared to parks compared to our city budget? Like the dollar amount or somewhat what the estimate is?
We, if city staff wants to jump in, we sometimes do in, in these scopes for park master plans, an O and M assessment. We did not have an operations and maintenance assessment tied to this exact project, but that's something that we, we can do. You would be looking at, yeah, a lot of different peer communities and seeing what people are spending and stuff. Actually, the National Recreation and Parks Association might have some, already some information on that as well. They come out with a annual report. That, that's kind of where those parkland level of service information comes from.
Okay. Any, any staff member might be able to address that?
Actually, the national park average is about $95 per citizen. So we're a little bit behind that, that ball.
I just wanted to get that data information, 95 citizen at 112. I know when I first got on council, we had roughly $100,000, $130,000 a year for parks. So I just want that statistic out there.
Yeah, that's, that's really important for our plans is to, you know, you get down through goal one through three and you go dollar sign, dollar sign, dollar sign. And that's why that operations and administration goal is so important because it's going to set up for staffing, for trainings, for implementation of, of getting the Parks Departments, both Recreation and Parks and Green Space bolstered up to handle these things that are going to come in the future. So.
Thank you.
And I will add, our funding resources team, what they are building for you guys that we will deliver with this project closeout is a magnitude of cost for Terrell Park, what you guys saw. So our landscape architecture team that built that concept plan has already gone through the steps to see what this is really going to ballpark to be. And then the other document that you guys will receive is kind of a report on a few different opportunities for the city to investigate for grant and funding opportunities for various types of projects. So when I was alluding to, we don't want to just kind of hand off the, the plan and that's it. These are some kind of the documents that we've been creating on the backend so that you guys are set up well.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
I don't have a question as much as a comment. I was on the Steering Committee and I just found that it was very interesting and it was very thorough and I appreciate the work that you guys did. And I look forward to boasting up Beaumont Parks. I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sherwood.
Anyone else? Well, I understand you want to take a picture, so jump on up here and we'll get the picture taken.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, right here. One, two, three. Two, three. Go.
Julian, thank you.
Thank you, boss.
For those of that are here for the proclamations, presentations, and recognitions, if you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And I certainly appreciate you coming. At the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to or contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code. The State of Shirley Harrison versus the City of Beaumont calls number 24DCCV221. Caleb Fenter and the Beaumont Professional Firefighters, Local 399, intervenors versus City of Beaumont. Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Roy West, Earl White, Taylor Neal, Mike Getz, Odwin Samuel, Charles Durio, Albert Turner, and Randy Felschall. Calls number B210244. Diana Artiga, Etal versus City of Beaumont, Civil Action, number 125CV00006. Christopher Shaw versus City of Beaumont, Civil Action, number 122CV. On a matter in which the duty of the attorney is to, to the government, governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly can fit, conflict, conflicts with the chapter in accordance with Section 551.071. can fit, conflict, conflicts with the chapter in accordance with section 551.071 of the Government Code. Opinion of the city attorney regarding fire contract negotiations. At this point, we're gonna enter into public comments. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items, one through five, or any other topic. Citizens wishing to speak on item six, which has been pulled, however, you will be given the opportunity to speak on item six during the plu, public hearing. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please be reminded that myself nor council can respond whenever you're making these comments, but someone from the office will contact you.
I'm sorry, Kate Hambright?
Good afternoon, my name is Kate Hambright, Seven Cheska Hollow, Beaumont, Texas. I'm a Beaumont Library Commission appointee, as well as president of the Terrell Historical Library Association. I'm here today to speak about the Children's Museum's request to move into the city's downtown public library. Downtown Maine occupied as a thirty thousand square foot building. The Children's Museum desires to lease twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet of this space, which would leave the library with the use of only five to ten thousand square feet of its own building. Library administrator Paul Eadie's offices and technical services occupy ninety-five hundred square feet. If these administrative offices were to be relocated, it seems unlikely the city would have the funds in its budget to build a new ten to twelve thousand square foot structure to house them. The City of Beaumont would need to obtain liability insurance in a sufficient amount to protect it in the event its additional lessies, young patrons, received injury while on the city-owned premises. However, our current charter appears to show no duty to support a children's museum. Article 1406 speaks to our library system. Specifically, only meeting rooms may be rented out per subsection 1406005. Further, although the nonprofit Children's Museum certainly contemplates the long-term lease of the downtown library rather than its single event use, the city properties event facilities named in article 1405 of our charter do not include our Beaumont Public Library as a city facility available for rental. A charter amendment would be necessary to accommodate a museum in our library. Downtown Maine partners with Region Five to offer ESL classes in addition to high school equivalency, citizenship, computer skills, and other classes offered by the library itself. Altogether, almost sixty-five hundred patrons annually take advantage of these programs, all conducted at downtown Maine. City libraries are one of the few free resources offered to citizens, and classes are provided at no cost. Our literacy programs help individuals become more productive members of society. The meeting rooms in our other city libraries are continually reserved, which leads one to wonder where these city services could effectively be offered, if at all, if downtown Maine were so reduced. Moreover, the partnership with Region Five could come into question due to lack of class space. Physical circulation at libraries is down nationwide. However, our Beaumont Public Library has done a remarkable job in adapting to the needs of our local taxpayers who support this public institution by providing literacy classes, ebooks, computer services, and outreach programs. In 2024, our library reached over fifty thousand people through its outreach programs. I would respectfully request the City Council encourage the Children's Museum to work with Beaumont Main Street to consider alternate locations among private property owners downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Captain Bruce Walker, President of Big Ticket Association, 795 Nineteenth Street, Beaumont, Texas. Mayor West, city council members. I'm here today to advocate for Cogus Ferry Park because of a recent survey that rated the park as in failing condition and the city's worst park. This historic park has provided consistent public access to the Nature's River for many years. Despite the massive floods, the massive reconstruction of city water facility, and the near total destruction of Pine Street, the park has continued to serve the community. I'd like to commend the city for its efforts in maintaining the boat ramps, the docks, the restrooms, the covered pavilions, the parking, and the green spaces. However, the park is definitely in need of upgrades and attention because of the heavy usage, because, because of heavy usage, and it, it has been, it is not unused and neglected. The park should be near the top of the list for upgrades. Since Tropical Storm Harvey, the Nature's River Adventures has used the park to offer free environmental education classes to all area schools in the Big Thicket, uh, region. This spring, we had over fifteen hundred students that attended classes aboard our floating classroom and participated in the environmental education activities in the park's green spaces. More trips are scheduled this fall. Our public eco-history tours and private charters will bring in additional eighteen hundred visitors to the park. VTA's annual Big Thicket Day on the Nature's celebrates the establishment of the Big Thicket National Preserve, and is a free event open to the public. This event attracts three hundred to four hundred people to the park. Also, the park serves as a trailhead for the official Texas parting, Texas paddling trail, Cogus Ferry to Lake Bayou. While running our programs at the park, we've observed many family gatherings, celebrating birthdays, reunions, church services, and even baptisms in the river. We see fishermen launching their boats, other fishing from docks and recreational boaters with water sport activities. We were excited about, uh, the new boat dock at Riverfront Park and returning to the museum to offer our passengers, um, many coming to Beaumont for the first time from destinations all over the world.
Thank you, sir.
However, the park boat dock will not...
Excuse me, sir. Time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'm Dora Nisby. I reside at forty-five twenty Carley Street, Beaumont, Texas. And I am here today, uh, representing the Library Commission. I'm chairman of the Library Commission, appointed by you. I also represent the friends of the Beaumont Public Library, and that is by choice. Today, I'm also representing taxpayers. We know that in your decision-making process, that you consider taxpayers. We know that you have procedures that you have to follow, that you may make the best decision for all of the taxpayers. We realize that it might be necessary for you to hire a consultant to advise you on what decision you might need to make concerning the use of the Beaumont Public Library as , uh, it is requested by the Children's Museum. On the serving of the Library Commission, I know from within that we serve all of the citizens of Beaumont. We represent all the citizens of Beaumont, and we know that you are concerned about all of the citizens of Beaumont, and that you are good stewards of the taxpayers' funds. And the taxpayers have provided adequate funds to give adequate services for all segments of our community, and that is what we are looking for. And we are dependent on our city council to act in favor and on behalf of all the citizens of Beaumont, that you would retain the mo, the downtown Beaumont library for use, for library services, and it's not evaluated by how many books that were circulated. We know that there are so many more services offered through the library services nowadays that we can't list them all. But if you just go in, into one of your libraries, you would be proud of the services that are being offered to all the citizens of Beaumont, and we pray and hope that you will continue to do this and not change the purpose of the downtown Beaumont library. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mike Getz, seventy-nine fifty Phelan. I'm here today to talk about the master park plan presentation that was provided to you for a few minutes ago. One of the things that came out of that discussion was the fact that per thousand citizens, we have an abundance, an overabundance of acreage. And that's true, partly because of how vast Terrell Park is. But if you delve into that actual document, you'll see that there's also noted a shortage of parks, especially in the west end of Beaumont and northwest Beaumont. So I'm here today to talk about a possible solution to that problem that really won't cost very much money. One of the things that the master parks consultant did not talk about was the hike and bike trails that are already there. These are properties owned by Drainage District Six, they're primarily for flood detention purposes. But we have collaborated as a city with Drainage District Six to be able to use those facilities for recreational purposes. The city paid to have sidewalks and riding trails all throughout the Folsom Hike and Bike Trail and the Gulf Terrace Hike and Bike Trail, and they are heavily used. It would seem to make sense financially and feasibility-wise to add amenities to these two facilities, which are already heavily utilized. The city does, in fact, maintain the, uh, mowing of the twelve inches on either side of the sidewalks right now. So, I'm asking you to think about that as a possibility to increase our park footprint in the west and northwest parts of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor West, council, Mr. Williams and staff. My name is Charlie Crabb, and I live at nine twenty-eight East Drive, seven 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 oh six. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. I just wanted to, uh, recommend the, uh, Police Department, Fire Department for doing a great job. I'd like to feature the Water Department. As you know, the, the, uh, that's the most viable po, vital portion that a city, city, city needs. It may have been called the, the city well first, but they were first on the, on the job for a community just established. And I was, uh, I was kind of disappointed in, in bringing someone in to, um, evaluate our parks and tell us how well the, the grass, how green the grass is and how well it's mowed. The, uh, our, our Parks Department, they're trying to, been telling you for years, we just need more money. And, and the citizen can tell you that Terrell Park's, uh, underused, underused, and it needs more parking, more facilities for young people, and shade for, for picnic areas. It's just a big old, uh, uh, nice mowing area out there now. I, I don't get out there on the weekends to see it, but I visited Cattail Marsh, uh, during the week and, and, uh, and, uh, whatever you call it, Terrell Park is just, you, left, is being, uh, uh, is, is, is not being used during the week. And I failed to, uh, mention to welcome all of our new councilmen, and thanks for, uh, Councilman Dario and Councilman Turner for returning. And I understand Councilman Dario is now the senior member. And there'll be something else that I have, I, I've got, I've got a few seconds. Well, I want to, uh, hope everyone has a good we, a week, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, see, Dean Tucker, twenty-five fifty, um, Long Street, Beaumont. It's nice to see new faces. I commend you on your win. I know it's a big deal, and you put a lot of energy. I ran for city council twice, and it's a tough thing to do. But anyway, just here to talk about a couple of things. In October of nineteen ninety-nine, I joined a Christian church in Austin, Texas that used a hallucinogenic herbal tea as a sacrament during its services. And become, and became, becoming part of the church changed my life dramatically. My eyes were opened to different methods of healing. I also learned about perhaps what can be considered one of the most fraudulent, destructive, harmful laws ever created in the United States. The law is commonly called the Controlled Substance Act of nineteen seventy. The latest update on this absurdly destructive law, published in January of this year, still has the audacity to claim that marijuana has no medical properties and is as harmful and as addict, as addictive as heroin. And under federal law, pretty much they say exactly this, no one has any legal right to use this, to have access to this, or they're still saying this to this day. But there's not one doctor, lawyer, or lawmaker in this country that truly believes this utter nonsense. One of our more prominent lawyers in Beaumont, Attorney Gilbert Adams, told me in a phone conversation, when I asked him if we have the right to know the law, he said, oh, yes, you do, and you not only have the right, but you have an obligation to know the law. So basically, we all need to understand what I'm saying here, we have an obligation. So with that in mind, we all need to learn the truth of what I'm saying about the harmful fraud being perpetrated on the American people. Knowing my constitutional rights, I declared at a city council meeting well over twenty years ago that I had the legal right to have access and you, and use of this special, of these special amazing healing medicines. Also, I sent a certified letter to several lawmakers, including President Bush, Attorney General Ashcroft, the DEA, and, and as well as Governor of Texas and state, county, city lawmakers, announcing my intention, under the protection of the First Amendment, to start growing marijuana in Beaumont by a certain date. And I kept my word to the lawmakers and to President Bush, and ended up growing about one pound of cannabis in my backyard in Beaumont. It was a wonderful and delightful experience, and to practice my legal right.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, I'm closing public comments. Did anybody intend to sign up that has not? All right. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda and, uh, minus item L, which will be discussed, uh, separately. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a...
Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I just have a question on B. I mean, are we going?
Yes, any of them but, but L. We'll, we'll separate L, so yes.
No, I just, uh, you know, it didn't take much resur, I'm just curious, on the machine, is it, you know, it said it had eleven thousand some odd hours, it's reached the end of its life. I didn't know of, uh, you know, the repairs, the sixty thousand dollars, uh, if someone can speak to that.
Jeff Harville, our fleet manager, can give you the details about the repairs to the grade all.
Good afternoon. I am the fleet manager for the city of Beaumont. Just to introduce myself. With this grade all, it is, it is at the end of its life, but we don't have any replacements in the budget currently. So the repairs are needed so that they, excuse me, so that streets can continue ditching around the city.
So is that 60, I mean, would that 60,000, I mean, I noticed a one-year warranty on the parts. That would tell me that probably expected to spend that every, every year, then?
Well, to continue the ditching, we have, have to have the grade alls. So in order to keep those running, we'll have to spend what is required to, to keep those if we want to keep the drainage flowing within the city. So yes, we'll continue to spend whatever it takes.
Okay.
Councilman Grintsch.
Could, could we rent this equipment for less than the 60,000 to do the, I mean, how many hours on average a year are we using this equipment?
I don't know the actual hours per year, and I haven't actually looked at a rental piece of equipment. Just to rent a dozer, just to give you an idea, to rent a bulldozer for the landfill, that's about $15,000 a month. Multiply that by a year, whatever 15 times 12 is, 150,000 for a year. So these heavy machinery costs a lot of money to rent. They cost a lot of money to upkeep. And the way you lessen your cost is to purchase that new equipment. That's always a struggle in itself, just because of the cost of them. We've put some in for this FY '26 budget, so maybe we can get a, a grade all or two this year. We'll see. But you have to maintain, if you're going to ditch, or if you're going to run a city, a landfill, or whatever, you've got to maintain the equipment to do it with.
Understood. I'm just being told that that piece of equipment new is about 300,000, and-
About 360.
About 360, okay. Well, that's close. And, you know, I just, I'm concerned that 60,000 a year, you know, to, to keep it up seems high.
Well, I don't necessarily believe that it's going to be 60,000 a year, but it's going to take the 60,000 now to get it up to an operational standard so that they can use it.
Okay. And so when was the last time that we did any repair to this piece of equipment?
They are, they are all constantly in, in our maintenance facility for repair, not this great of an, of an expense. Being that they're old, the city has four grade alls. There are three really old ones, such as this model and two others, and then there's a newer one. One of the grade alls, we can't even repair because we can't get parts for it. So we've turned it into a, a parts, used parts platform so that we can help repair the others, of which we've used several pieces from. The other two have been in for repairs. The, the newer one, we just put an engine in it. So these things get used rarely. I can't answer to this point right now of how many hours annually each machine gets used, but they are highly used across the city and they're needed. And if I really thought that we could go without another grade all, I wouldn't, or I really thought that I would get one for this next year, I wouldn't put in the money to do it. But even if I was to, to get approved for a grade all in October, it would probably take till May or June next year before we would get it. So it'd at least be a year out before we'd receive anything.
Jeff, would you be able to provide us with a work order history for the grade alls and their average one hours? Would that be a report that we, we could generate for the council? Would that be helpful?
Councilman Hilliard, and then Councilman Durio?
Kind of to expand on what Councilman Crenshaw said, I know a lot of companies will enter into lease programs where they'll get certain types of equipment that they'll use, kind of like trucks or, or things like that. Is that something we've ever looked into?
With the grade alls, the city does currently lease, we lease about 130 F-150 type and smaller equipment sedans. We do have a leasing program right now. I would have to look into it to get more info on, on grade alls, but I'm sure as long as you're willing to pay for it, they're willing to lease it.
Well, I believe it'd be a whole lot cheaper than, because I, I would be led to believe that this isn't the only repair that's been done on this piece of equipment. It probably won't be the last one this year, especially if it's used as much as it is. Would that be a fair?
Well, to lease anything is never as cheap as to just buy it outright.
No, no, I mean, the, the, the piece of equipment in question, it'll, it'll probably be worked on again this year.
Probably will.
So this will be an ongoing, basically a, a money pit. And so with leased equipment, when it breaks or it messes up, you turn it in or they, they fix or repair it.
If, if that's the way that the lease is taken, there's leases you can take with repairs or without repairs.
So that's not exactly true. In, in some leases, if it's general wear and tear, in terms of usage, then it may be covered under the leasing agreement. But there are some situations where the city may have to absorb the cost for damage to that equipment, which would mean additional insurance payments cost, because we would have to insure that equipment as part of our own.
Right, but they replace that equipment too after so many years of service.
It's, yeah, we can, we can do some research on what leasing options are available for this equipment. Just also be aware that this is a heavy-use equipment, and so it's not like a passenger vehicle. So there's some, there's some stipulations to that. But at the end of the day, our streets and drainage crews are expected to perform the ditching needs to maintain the drainage in the city, to supplement that. And one of the additional challenges is the staffing, to have the CDL drivers to operate the grade alls to supplement the entire roadside ditching program. We have also contracted out ditching, but for the urgent needs to get the, the ditching work done, that's why we are trying to make these repairs to this grade all.
Understand. I just looking at new options, you know?
So are we.
A way to save, save money, because this is going to be an ongoing deal, especially with the age of the equipment that we're using.
So are we, absolutely. We're always looking for options, and we'll definitely explore that, that further and, and come back to you.
Councilman Durio?
So this grade all, we're using this in our current citywide ditching program?
Through the streets and drainage crews. This is for city staff to use.
Okay.
Not the contractor crews.
Okay. But without it, then what, what kind of effect would that have on our city ditching crew?
So the contract crews are working on an established contract with identified streets that they're working on. So if a citizen calls and they say, hey, I've got this issue, I need you to come take care of it, the city crews are the ones who can respond quickly to address that situation. You don't have to wait to negotiate with the contractor. Then you're going to be concerned because I'm coming to you with a change order. So that's what the city crews are for. And so the contracts are to supplement the work that the crews do.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
My question is, maybe staff can help. So this didn't make the budget for 2025, but it is scheduled for 2026 budget to replace this equipment?
Well, that budget hadn't been approved yet.
Right, right, right.
So it, it, it will be submitted, and then if approved, then we would be able to get a new one.
Okay, yes.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other items on the consent agenda? People have, besides item L?
Got a question about E.
All right, item E.
Yeah, 300 some odd notices or requests sent out for, for bid and only one response. I just didn't know if that's-
Item E.
Is, is the single response a normal occurrence?
We read our purchasing.
Okay.
For plumbing, it seems to be the trend. We send out lots of responses to the local plumbers that are set up as vendors within the city. We've done that for years. This current contractor's had to contract for quite a while. They tend to be the low bidder and qualified. When it has an opportunity to bid on it, some choose not to. So.
Councilman?
I spoke to- I don't have that specific date with me.
Was it a year, six months ago?
Generally, it's, it's generally, it's put out for a month.
Okay.
And then we evaluate it, and then we'll take it to council at the soonest opportunity. So-
Okay, I-
A half ago.
I, I made some phone calls to some large plumbing companies here locally, and the only one, none of them had received any bid from the city on any type of work like that. They would be eager to be a part of that. Can you provide us a list of, of all the people that were sent the bid for the plumbing?
Yes, sir, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Sherwood and Councilman Turner.
Typically, when this goes out for bid, do we place this on the city's website, or do we actually go out and court people to do a bid?
So if they're set up as a vendor within the city, we try to make sure that they're, every effort to make sure that they're on our bid list there. But also, what the city has is a platform that we utilize called Ionwave. And those vendors are transferred over to that platform, and then they send out notifications. So if this vendor is in our system, we send it to whatever email address has been-
And they would have an opportunity, if they so desired or saw it or kept up with the email, then they would be able to see that this job is out for bid.
Right. And we do have instances where that email's no longer any good. They haven't updated that. Ionwave is our platform, and we've got information urging everyone to set up on that platform. And that's why you'll see 300, 400, because that's a large platform. It's statewide. We absorb some other cities' vendors as well. So it's reaching a lot of folks. And since we've been on it, we, you know, most of our vendors have gotten on that platform. But it is up to them to give them the correct information when they sign up. So, but that's why you see so many vendors. Some of them are not actual plumbers. Some sell plumbing supplies. But when they set up underneath that category, that's where they get notifications. So really, all those are not going to be plumbers. And that's even within our system.
Councilman Turner?
For staff, this is something we kind of discussed for quite some time way prior to this. And can you just speak to the steps it takes to get on the vendor list? I think it's important for people watching, since we're having this topic, because we did it before, but might be time for a refresher. So can you speak to some of the steps of how you get on the vendor list for the city of Beaumont and actually apply for these bids?
Well, as always, they can come up to our office on the third floor and can apply in person. The information is on our city webpage under Departments and Purchasing. It'll, they can set up as a vendor in our system, and it also guides them to set up as a vendor in Ionwave. Those in the trenches are there. Or they can call or come to our office on the third floor in Suite 315.
Yeah, and the city has actually done workshops in the past to kind of make it more accessible and notify the community that we do have these bids. So I just want to make sure it's understood. The efforts are being made, but we continue to do more. But that's the process in order to get on the bid list.
Right. And, and, and honestly, not all vendors are in our system. They don't choose to be in there, so they're not getting notified. But one thing that we do do is we advertise that in the enterprise. I mean, sometimes the enterprise, the examiner is our contracted vendor. Every bid that Public Works does that we do, it's, it's put into that paper. So we do advertise there as well. So if they just watch that, even if they're not a vendor, they can see it. Or if they go to our platform, they can see everything that's out for bid.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please specify by saying aye, and this excludes item L.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item L?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Council, consider resolution authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation and a principal amount not to exceed $20,500,000. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
All right, is there a motion for item number L?
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for item number L. Is there any discussion?
I would ask, I think we have a budget workshop?
Well, and we also have a presentation for this, since there was a couple of questions.
Oh, okay. So I would ask that we wait until after the budget workshop on Thursday to get more information about what exactly is involved in this $20 million before we-
They, they have the information to provide today.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just not sure it's a good idea for us to move forward with spending or borrowing $20 million without four new council members at least attending a budget workshop where we might talk about the budget. So I would just ask that this be tabled for the next agenda and after the budget workshop.
Would you like to see the presentation that was prepared?
Sure.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. It's a very short presentation, three slides, but it gives you information on this request coming from the city. So what we're asking, well, let me go back to the initial start of this entire process. So the city, through its annual budget process and through its creation of the Community Investment Plan, which we call the CIP, each year, we budget projects in the CIP that require funding through the issuance of debt. And why do we do that? We do that because the city doesn't have $20 million or $30 million on hand to pay for these projects. So it's similar to purchasing a home. I mean, most people don't have $400,000 or $500,000, so you go out and get a loan for the home. So this is very similar. This process that the city has gone through before is, is something most cities go through in terms of issuing debt. So during our, during the creation of the budget for the current fiscal year, these are projects that were presented to city council, that city council approved in September of last year to be part of the budget. So these projects that we're asking for the funding to cover are part of the city's existing budget that went through the budget process last fiscal year. So this requested action today is just for the publication. This is the initial step. There are a few steps in the process of issuing certificates of obligation. So today's action does not actually authorize the issuance of the CO, certificates of obligation. Today's action that we're requesting from city council is just the publication part of the issuance of funding for the projects that are already included in the adopted budget for the current fiscal year. Texas law requires a 45-day notice. So this approval today would kick off that 45-day notice period for the certificates of obligation to be approved. So we would come back to city council at a later date in time, and we have that date on our calendar now. So in Ju-, on July the 15th, we would then come back to city council and ask you for approval of the certificates of obligation. But today, we're not asking for approval of the certificates of obligation. We're not asking for you to approve the $20.5 million. We're asking, we're starting the process, and we're asking for approval of the publication, which we as a city have to publish in a local newspaper and for two consecutive weeks. And we also have to publish it on our city's website. Next slide. So the projects that this $20.5 million will cover, the projects are listed on your screen. They're going, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but most are streets and drainage-related projects. We have the athletic complex, that's a parks project, the parking lot rehabilitation, pickleball courts. That's about $40 million to start the design phase of the pickleball courts at the tennis center, Colliers Ferry Boat Ground, and pier renovations. And some of these are annual programs, such as the city, citywide ditching program. Or if you skip down, you'll see annual sidewalk repair. And at the very bottom is annual street rehabilitation program. So these are- Or if you skip down, you'll see annual sidewalk repair. And at the very bottom is annual street rehabilitation program. So these are programs that we as a city uh, fund annually. And over, in the past, the city of Beaumont has gone out for the issuance of debt pretty much every year, sometimes every other year. And we go out and we issue about twenty to, uh, thirty million dollars on average in debt. Last year it was, was a little under that. It was around twelve million dollars, but our average is between twenty and thirty million. So again, this is just, this is in, this is in line with the way the city of Beaumont has always issued debt for major capital projects. And again, this list on your screen are the projects that would be covered from the issuance of these certificates of obligation. Next slide. So one of the things that I hear that out in the community, some people are confused as it relates to what are general obligations or certificates of obligation? So here are just some definitions of, of, uh, the city's various debt instruments. So for most of our capital projects here at the city of Beaumont, we either issue certificates of obligation, which is really just a long-term borrowing uh, mechanism that most city, cities use. Um, these are issued without voter approval. The local government pays these instruments, uh, infrastructure projects using certificates of obligation, revenue bonds. Those are municipal bonds. They are supported by revenue from a specific project. Uh, these are water and wastewater related funding mechanisms, uh, and they are secured by a specified revenue source, uh, of an enterprise or proprietary fund. So for revenue bonds, again, only water and sewer related projects and they are paid back through, um, um, water and sewer rates that the ratepayers pay monthly. And then general obligation bonds, again, the same, uh, process, uh, uh, it's a form of long-term borrowing that a taxing entity use to fund projects. These require voter approval. Normally with general obligation bonds, these are for larger projects. This is, uh, um, the, uh, bond referendum that's proposed for November. Those are, a lot of those projects are really large projects such as, um, well, we don't have a recommended list yet, but, but, but there are, they are normally larger projects that we want to take to the voters and get the voter approval on those projects. Um, so general obligation bonds, uh, certificates of obligations, they are backed by the full faith and credit of the city. So they are backed by the city's taxing authority. Again, uh, especially with certificates of obligation, it is not anything new for the city of Beaumont. And, uh, most cities use, uh, these, um, funding mechanism for, mechanisms for large projects. That's my last slide and I'm open to any questions.
Well, for clarity, also certificate of obligations, they are funded through our current budget and aren't needing a tax increase to be able to fund. As with the revenue bonds, they're revenue coming in. So it's through general obligation bonds that go to the public for voting because at that point they would be voting for a tax increase for the amount associated with that project. But the certificate of obligation, the revenue bonds, they're, uh, they come from our interest and sinking account. Is that correct to be able to pay?
These certificates of obligation do, then that's correct, yes.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I want to, uh, for the sake of clarity, understand what you just said and maybe we want to be clear. This is not a tax increase on any community. Are we, is that a clear understanding?
That is, that is absolutely correct. We included this twenty point five million dollars in the current fiscal year budget. So the current tax rate incorporates and, and assume, uh, this twenty point five million dollars. So no citizens, it's going to receive an, an increase in their tax rate as a result of.
A newly elected council person such as myself cannot in fact increase the tax rate on any community. Is, is that clear? Is that correct?
That would be done through the budget process whenever you do approve the budget each year in September, uh, essentially you're, you know, if there are costs that require a tax increase, the city council would make that decision then.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
So we have some COs coming off the books then? Is that, is there anything that's, the terms wrapping up on some old debt and, and is that why we're taking this on or, or no?
No, that's, that's not why we're taking, uh, this on. We, we pay annually debt. We have a debt service payment annually. So, so we do pay off some debt as we move along throughout the year and then we, we add debt. Uh, but this is not as a result of us, uh, refunding or, or some of the debt being rolled off.
What would the term on these, on this be on these certificates?
Twenty, uh, twenty or twenty-five years. We have our financial advisor here, uh, uh, Mr. Trailer.
And then I know too, I mean, you said that this is normal for us, but, um, a lot of cities don't wait forty-two years for a, a bond election either. So, I, I mean, could that be? Or, or we've been operating like this. I mean, maybe this upcoming bond election would, could that be a, a new way of, of funding things and projects?
A- absolutely, Councilman. And, and, and that's why we, we are proposing the bond election again. Those projects are going to be recommended to be paid for, uh, as general obligation bonds taken to the voters, hearing from the voters in terms of whether or not they want those projects, uh, to, want to be taxed, uh, uh, as a result of adding those new projects. The city of Beaumont in the past has mainly funded projects through certificates of obligation, but again, general obligation bonds are for larger projects.
And I know you said it wouldn't raise taxes, but surely not taking on twenty point five million dollars in debt would, would it lower taxes if you didn't take that on or no? No, no, no effect whatsoever?
Well, as I mentioned, in our, our current tax rate is already set. So the tax rate that we currently have right now, which is about sixty-five cents per one hundred dollars of value, this is already included in that tax rate. And that tax rate actually, and, and thanks for bringing it up, Councilman Williams, that our tax rate for the current fiscal year, although we added twenty point five million dollars in the budget, i- it's in the budget as part of the existing tax rate. Our tax rate decreased about three cents from sixty-eight to sixty-five cents in the current fiscal year. Thanks for mentioning that.
Okay.
Whereas if we're doing a general obligation bond, just for clarity, you increase taxes for that cost. There is no increased taxes with sent, uh, certificate of obligations. And these are typically, which, uh, we will be able to get over the next forty-five, these are necessary repairs. These aren't new expenditures, building new roads. This is repairing and replacing what exists and like the parking lot at the athletic complex that was reported to us. It's pretty sizable that's in, uh, bad disrepair that we've been postponing.
I got a question too.
Sure. Councilman Crenshaw then Councilwoman Sherwood.
And, and I hear you, Mr. Mayor, but with all due respect, pickleball courts are not necessary repairs, right?
That's right. I think that, that was funded in there for the engineering of them.
That's correct. Yeah. I mean, next, next year, i- if you look at our s- five-year CIP and we actually have a present, uh, we meet this Thursday on, uh, and we'll cover the five-year CIP. And you will see that in the current fiscal year, the forty thousand dollars is just for design and engineering. Next fiscal year, we'll have to come back to council to issue the COs for the construction phase. So this is just phase one with regard to the pickleball courts.
So, so it's only, um, of this twenty point five million, only forty thousand dollars is engineering and new design? Everything else is repair of existing projects?
Oh, oh, no, sir. Uh, we're, I'm referring to the pickleball court. Only the forty thousand is just for the, the design phase of the pickleball court.
Okay. And out of the twenty point five million, how much of that money is for design and engineering of new projects and not repairing existing infrastructure that needs to be repaired? And I don't need an exact number, but just a ballpark. Are we talking fifty-fifty or?
Yeah, and I may have that number. Uh, actually, that is the only one. Give me a second here.
Uh, the, uh, projects, could we go back to the project list slide? Thank you. So the pickleball, pickleball, bah, can't say that real fast. So for FY twenty-five in the, uh, the FY twenty-five CIP program, the forty thousand dollars for the pickleball courts design was approved. Then the remaining three hundred thousand is for the ongoing construction. The Colliers Ferry boat ramp and pier, there is engineering also associated with that and I am trying to find it, uh, quickly. The total cost for that project is, is approximately four hundred and forty thousand. And we have the estimate from the engineer, uh, to.
One hundred, one hundred and twenty thousand is.
Thank you. Uh, the rest, the citywide ditching, the stormwater pipe inspections, West Lucas Drive, the pump station repairs, uh, those are all being, uh, engineered in-house with city staff. Fourth Street, which was engineered by city staff, is complete. We're just finishing out the portion of FY twenty-five, uh, that hit the FY twenty-five account. Uh, bridge repairs at various locations also is an engineering cost. Um, and that is a project that is ongoing. So the engineering is con- has been for the most part completed. Now we're in the construction phase. Uh, then the remaining projects are also in-house staff for engineering and most of them have been engineered at least to about eighty percent complete of engineering.
My question is, this has already been allocated monies from a previous council that has already been approved. Am I understanding this correctly?
You're absolutely correct.
We are making a notification that we are continuing with the project and it has, has already been voted on and approved previously. Is that correct?
That's correct.
These are all good questions though, because it's a lot of information to take in. So, any other questions? Councilman Duria?
So, if you don't have these type of instruments as far as all the different, uh, bonds and things, how will we get all this work done?
We would still have to tax the city, I mean, the citizens of, of Beaumont and we would have to, we wouldn't have the money most likely because it would have to come out of our general fund. And what does that mean? We would have to delay a lot of these projects and infrastructure will get behind and then we'll be playing catch-up forever. Um, so yeah, we would have to pay for it essentially out of our general fund if we can't find any grants to fund them.
So it's good that we have those available to the city, that we can get projects done in a time and a manner. Get some of the things like the pickleball courts, that's some of the stuff that the citizens wanted. You know, that's quality of life. And that's important as well. But so is sidewalk repair, bridge repair, all the, uh, the pump station, all that's needed stuff that we need to fix. And we can't, can't wait.
Absolutely. Staff, each year we update the five-year community investment plan, um, public, public work staff, engineering staff, city, all, all of us work hard on determining what needs to be done, when, and we work with finance to help determine what instrument we're going to use to pay for, for these projects.
Being proactive.
Being proactive, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Turner then Councilman Williams?
So in our CIP, is our CIP currently online?
Yes, sir. The, the, yes, sir.
So that's a document we kind of went over prior to being on council. In our CIP, we have several projects that were actually already being funded. What happens if we do not fund projects like the major drive in Northwest Parkway traffic light or maybe clothes out on the Fourth Street payments? Like what happens to the contractors that have done the work or the work already started?
We would prioritize, you know, look for the savings where we can find it and bring those projects to completion. Uh, we have several projects that are ready to go to bid. Uh, however, once we have confirmation that the funding's going to move forward, then we will be able to advertise them.
So in the CIP, some of it was funded in twenty twenty-four, uh, because our budget year is October one to October one. It's not historically what, how it goes. So what happens if we funded something October one last year and we're finished off payments, which is what some of these projects are carryover from the previous year. If we don't, if council, council, we choose not to fund it, what happens to the?
I'll defer to finance on that.
Okay.
Well. Well, if some of these are funded with money from last fiscal year, as you mentioned, Councilman, and, and we don't move forward, then we will have to dip into other funds like our general fund in order to pay for it. Uh, if the project is, let's say it's halfway done or it's started, then we would have to find other sources of, of revenue to cover the cost.
I get it because when I first came on, there was some of my same questions and that's how I kind of was operated. So I totally understand some of the questions right now.
It's kind of awkward because these projects don't run on a FY fiscal year basis. And so you do have that overreach, especially the projects like Fourth Street that went across three years. So it does make it a little bit uh, challenging, but there's, we could do the best we can to make it, make it work. Like I said, we would have to shelve and postpone some projects.
Right. Councilman Williams?
I- is there any concern with the, uh, I mean, I know it's not a given, but, and it's not directly connected, but, but impending rate cuts, you know, expected throughout the year? Could, could the cost of this go down? I mean, of that debt go down if you were to wait and see what happens?
Again, Dusty Trailer are the city's financial advisor.
Good afternoon, Councilman Williams. The Fed is, has indicated that, or I say the Fed has indicated, the market believes that the Fed may cut rates one to three times before the end of the, the fiscal year. It is possible that long-term rates could come down, but I would, I would point back to what the Fed did back if we look in September, October of this past year, it's of twenty twenty-four. The Fed cut interest rates three times at the end of twenty twenty-four. What happened to long-term rates when the Fed cut rates? Long-term rates actually went up. So just because the Fed may cut rates, when they cut rates, they are looking at, they are cutting rates on the shortest end of the yield curve. These certificates of obligation, we anticipate having a twenty-year uh, final maturity. So an average life on these certificates of obligation would be about eleven years. The Fed, the Fed rate cuts really does not have a significant impact directly on those interest rates. When we ran the pro forma schedule on this twenty and a half million dollars, we assumed a five percent interest rate. If we were to be in the market today to issue those certificates of obligation, we believe the interest rate would probably be in the four and a half percent range. Sure, would love to see rates come down to four or even below four, but uh, even if the Fed does move forward with rate cutting, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to help us on long-term borrowing costs. And I, I would just, I would also point out to that end is, as it relates to city of Beaumont and borrowing, when the city of Beaumont has gone out and done certificates of obligation in the past and you've got a pretty good history of doing this over the course, if not every year, every other, every third year, something like that. Then the thing that, that happens is whenever you sell municipal bonds, those bonds get sold with a ten-year call feature in them where you can't refinance them usually sooner than nine or ten years after their issuance. The city has been pretty aggressive. Every time an opportunity comes up where there's been a previously issued certificate of obligation, when it comes up as an opportunity to refinance and if interest rates cooperate, the city then comes right back in and refinances that hopefully to a lower interest rate. These certificates of obligation, we're also going to set those up with a call feature such that down the road, if rates cooperate, we would anticipate the city coming back and refinancing those to an even lower rate.
Any other questions? Councilman Crenshaw, since you had mentioned about the possibility of tabling this, the, the explanation, the fact that it's just about, uh, we're, we're talking about the, uh, authorization for publication of the notice. This isn't authorization for the bonds at this point. That will be, that would be something we would vote on July fifteenth. So there is an opportunity to gather more information. So there is an opportunity to gather more information.
Yeah, correct. My preference would have been to have had the budget workshop before we're asked to, you know, basically vote to approve this stuff. But since today is just the publication, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward. And I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
Yes, sir. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number L, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Conduct an election for Mayor Pro Tempor, Tim? Mayor Pro Tim? And conduct an election.
All right. I would like to make a motion for Councilman Turner to be nominated for Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like a second.
There is a first and a second for nominating for Councilman Turner to be the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving, Councilman Turner, is Mayor Pro Tim, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
He opposed. The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the contract to Preferred Facilities Group USA for the Nature Street Quiet Zone Median Reconstruction Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? Councilman Duriel.
Where exactly would this quiet zone be located?
This is Nature Street, just one block south of College by, I believe it's Ebenezer Baptist Church. That is a, there is a downtown quiet zone, and that is the one remaining crossing. And it is, it was constructed, constructed the same way as the ones on the west end, but it's a different railroad. So we were able to move forward quickly with the permitting process. So we had the opportunity to get this one resolved, and we're moving forward with that.
And the reason I ask is that most quiet zones are in neighborhoods where people live. You know, nobody lives over there.
I got you.
There's, well, you have, City Hall is affected by that, the courthouse, the police station, there's some offices. And also, the train horns were very disruptive to church services.
Okay, do we have any plans in the future? Because I have a lot of places that could use quiet zones in my ward.
You know, that certificates of obligation conversation?
All right, Councilman Hilliard.
Now, are we going to follow the new federal guidelines? Because my ward people are, are having a hard time, and we've, we've discussed this, but are we going to follow these same guidelines so we don't go through this process that we're going through in, in my ward with the train horns?
We're designing it to the current federal standards that were approved at the crossing of Coburn Street, which I believe is also part of that west end quiet zone. But until all of the crossings are brought up to that standard, they're not going to stop honking the horns.
So I have a question, really, and you can, I know you can answer it, is why not go a little bit above that? Because we know that they're probably going to change the regulation again, and we're going to run into the same. So instead of it being three feet, why not make it four feet at today's cost?
We would be taking the risk that they go four feet the other direction. So we have to meet what the federal requirements are at the time that they're in place.
Councilman Turner.
And that, that's what I was going to ask. The railroad, I wish in a perfect world, we had jurisdiction of. We, we don't have jurisdiction over them.
We sure don't. No, some railroads do want to be partners with the city, and we've been very fortunate. Unfortunately, this railroad for the west end quiet zone has their regulations. It's their world, we're just breathing in it.
And just to be completely fair, Ms. Molly, because I, I know, I see a council member in the crowd, he, he was very vocal as well, like you, Julie, about these railroads. But to see, they, once they change the standards, now it's up to us to come up to where they changed it to, correct?
Correct. So we, we made application to the railroad, which we can't even make it directly to the railroad. We have to go through a third-party engineering firm, and they review it on their schedule. Then they schedule, they make initial comments, which we have received initial comments, we've addressed those. We're waiting to hold the onsite meetings with the railroad, with TechDOT, with all interest of the Federal Railroad, FRA. And then everybody points and looks at it and agrees this is the path forward. We make final changes to the plans, and we get final approval, and then we go to work.
Councilman Hilliard.
I'm good. I had a chance to talk to you about, we actually want to back the state, and we've got state and federal to make sure it's resolved, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're scheduled, the current schedule is for June the 18th for those site meetings. Please do.
Yes, we will.
Councilman Williams.
Why is there the discrepancy in the engineer's estimate than in the contract? I mean, it's 20%.
There's always different incidentals. There's pricing that changes, that fluctuates. If there's different costs due to the flagging, we do the best that we can to get the estimates based off of most current construction standards. We used the pricing for the Coburn project, that was within the last year. We do the best we can, given the data that we have. But with this also going through a buy board purchase in COOP, their prices are set. So if we had gone through a, the formal procurement process, which is roughly a 60-day process, which would delay this project an additional amount of time, we may have gotten a better price. But in the interest of trying to address these quiet zones as quickly as possible, we opted to go through the purchase in COOP.
Thank you.
All right, if there, Councilman Crenshaw?
I just want to quickly add, so far as this item that we're voting on, as someone who has worked in the courthouse, both the county and the, and the federal courthouse, these downtown trains are a significant obstacle sometimes, especially in the county courthouse. And as someone with a pretty significant hearing impairment, I'm grateful to city staff for getting this done and getting those quiet zones authorized.
Thank you.
Councilman Duriel.
This particular quiet zone, just raising a median, we're not, don't have to put any crossing guards in it, they already have those there?
We will have to, yeah, this is just everything on the pavement. There's some signage that will need to be handled. But really, it's, it's that barrier in the middle and the associated striping.
Well, mostly, most of the time when you do quiet zone, that, and it wasn't one there previously, it, it would cost more than what this is costing, because you have to put the arms and the lights and all that.
Or close this, close the crossing altogether, like we did with Main Street and Pearl Street.
Okay. I didn't really ask this question, I was commenting on it. Is it any plans in the future to put in more quiet zones?
That is something we can look, we are updating. The last cost estimates that were prepared, they're available on the city's website. If you go to the departments and go to Public Works, there's a railroad quiet zone page. And there were cost estimates published in 2017, and they were pretty significant then for, I believe there's a quiet zone in your ward, and I think there was a quiet zone on the north end. And it's just a matter of budgeting and getting the money for it.
For entering that budget process.
Because I need one, I need one SP tracks on Washington Boulevard all the way to Cardinal Drive. Every crossing.
It's not on the agenda to discuss today, but thank you, Councilman Duriel. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take, have the reading of item number three, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one, accept maintenance, and authorize found payment to Brice Star Contracting, Inc. for the emergency repair of a 24-inch wastewater main on Washington Boulevard, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
All right, is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion?
I, I have a question.
Councilman Williams.
I mean, on this one, I'm going the other way. What led to the significant savings from the contract amount from 163 to 97,000?
Councilman Williams, so if you notice it, it was an emergency. No, sorry, yeah, Mike Harris, Water Utilities Director. If you notice, it was emergency repair. So when we procured the contractor, we asked for a quote, and the original quote had come out to the 163. But once they completed the repair, there wasn't a need as much as what they quoted for. So that's the price difference.
Good. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number 13 to the contract with Alco LLC of Beaumont for the Colliers Ferry Pump Station project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
A second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hilliard.
So I, who would I ask the staff about? Without forbid, we had engineers and people that went out and looked at it, and a bid was, was given to a, to a bunch of companies to bid on. So why so many changes? Would these things not seem like one of these is for a curb, for, for water, for, for water to flow? Was that not figured in when they were, were doing this work? I mean, some of these change orders, like the removal of trees for $1,500. I, I'm just curious, none of this was taken into account? I'm sure that you guys walk through the bid process. Everybody that usually bids on a project, well, you'll walk the site, you'll look at all the things, they'll ask questions. You'll also do this with engineers. So my question, why are there 12 change orders? And what was the highest bid that we received that we rejected? And where were they on the bid list? Were they the last, were they the cheapest bidder? Or were they the highest bidder? Because it, with the change orders, does this now put them at the top? So wouldn't it have been easier just to go with the, the first, the person that was the highest? Because evidently, did they see these things, and the other ones didn't? So we're trying to understand the change orders here, and where does this put them now on the scale? If you look at all the bids that were turned in, where does this, where, where do they stand now with the, the cost overruns with the, with the number one or the highest bidder?
So we can actually start and back up a little bit further to that and the actual engineering design process. So the engineering design took about 14 months to work through, which was very detailed surveys, walking through the site, do, going and getting clearance from every commission that the state has that can weigh in, because this is a federally funded project.
Right.
So we're trying to do the best we can to identify all of the issues that can happen in a project. Then subsequent to that, we do advertise for bid. The bid process normally is about a four-week process. For this one, I can pull the details for you, but I believe we went at least eight weeks to give all of the contractors ample time to fully digest the construction plans and to prepare their bids, submit their bids. From there, the engineer, along with city staff, reviewed all the bids. So we don't automatically just award it to the lowest bid guy because he's the lowest bid. It has to be the, the most qualified, best value for the city. So they evaluate the bids. When we advertise on the Public Works side in the Water Utilities contracts, we advertise through our Onwave online portal. We also utilize something called CivCast. So that is one of the major plan rooms to get as much of a broadcast across the state of Texas for contractors to be notified of this bidding opportunity, then make the recommendation of award. So this is a $26 million contract, which gives some indication to the level of complexity for this, this design. As we work through it, the work, regardless of whether it is this contractor or the other contractor, as you go through, we had hoped that the trees would not be an issue. They turned out to be in conflict, because we also had the two, two projects that were going on, the pump station and the raw water delivery line on Down Pine Street. That, like the gentleman said, we've trashed it. We're going to put it back better than it was, but in the meantime, it's, it's in pretty bad shape. Then you evaluate to see, this work still has to be done. So as these change orders come in for, and we don't read, we don't just accept a change order because the contractor said, hey, I got a change order. It has to be evaluated on its merit and whether or not the, what they're asking for is reasonable, if it's acceptable within the realms of the contract, or are they asking for something that is peripheral to the contract that's not relevant? So everything has to be evaluated. There is a lot of pushback from city staff, from the engineering firm, to make sure that the costs that are being presented are valid. Because at the end of the day, we have to present this to FEMA, the funding agency, and they have to concur that what is being proposed to be paid for is acceptable. So there are extensive lists of checks and balances. And so, you know, the trees, we had hoped that they weren't being the way they are. You know, a frustrating one that is coming to you is this, the concrete lining between Pine Street and this access road. So I don't know if you've been out there lately, but the access road is a very steep road, and the engineering was just to do some stabilizing sand. It's going to be a maintenance issue. So we're either going to rip, put concrete riprap down now to prevent the erosion, or we're going to do it later. So if we do it now, we have the opportunity for FEMA to reimburse us for this project. If we do it later, then we will be coming out of our operating funds to do that work in the future. So we're kind of balancing those things out as well. Sorry, that was the long answer, but I want to make sure.
I, I wanted the long answer.
Yeah, and the other is another erosion control, Matt, that we've been waiting for the site to get stabilized enough that we can even move forward with it, because as the access road is climbing up, Pine Street itself is diving down to Colliers Ferry, and there are ongoing erosion issues. And so both, this change order is to address both of those things.
And those were not foreseen in the original bid?
These were things that were brought up and discussed during the, the contract. But you don't, ideally in a project, again, this is the work that has to be done to establish it. So we saw, it could have been rolled, it should, probably should have been rolled into the original contract. And I think that the engineer was maybe focused more on making sure that the pumps and the controls of delivering the raw water, you know, that, that's the most critical thing. This, that's the true purpose and objective of this project than worrying about a roadside ditch and a culvert washing out. And so, you know, identifying that this is an issue that needs to be addressed, we're having to take care of it. But we, we don't, we do want to make sure that we are working towards the best value toward, for the city, because it's not unusual to get a contractor. because it's not unusual to get a contractor that will just lowball a job. And that is, and that has happened. That's happened recently, in the last couple of years.
It happens a lot. A lot of companies will lowball, then they'll change order it, and they end up higher than the highest bid that was turned in.
Right.
I just want to make sure that that's not something that's going on.
No, sir. And so you've got to make sure that as this work is being, as the scope of work is changing, that high bid would have also changed accordingly. So we don't do lump sum bids. Everything that we try to do, because of the transparency, is a unit price bid. So they're paying by the foot, by the square yard, by the cubic yard. So if a contractor's going to come in and say, yeah, you know, what we have in the cost estimate, we needed 100 feet of curb. Yeah, if we needed 100 feet of curb and come back and it's 200 feet of curb, okay, we can go out there and measure that 200 feet of curb was actually built, and it's fair to pay for the 200 feet of curb. You get into a lot of trouble, it gets very nebulous if you start doing lump sums, and that's why we actively try to avoid lump sum contracts as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please have the reading of item number five?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number nine, accept maintenance, and authorize final payment to Callan Marine LTD Limited for the Riverfront Park Restoration Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five? Is there a second for approval?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? The day I've been waiting for. At the Riverfront Park, done. Yeah. All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to conduct the public hearing to receive comments on the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan Draft and 2025 Annual Action Plan Public Services Line Item of the Consolidated Grant Programs 2025 Annual Action Plan.
Okay, the public hearing is now open?
I don't have anyone, Mayor.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Are we going to have any other presentation before I close it? Because we have no action item on this.
No.
All right. We'll bring back the item, I think, June 3rd.
Okay. So now, would you please take us into the work session?
Counsel to review and discuss overview of city code requirements and development standards, and we'll have a presentation from Ms. Steeman, Inc., our planning director.
I promise I prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I was asked by the previous counsel to give a workshop on our code requirements and development standards and how we relate to surrounding cities. Next slide. In Texas, state law requires building permits for most construction and remodeling projects for residential and commercial properties and plats for all subdivisions. The specific requirements and enforcement of these permits are primarily handled at the local level by municipalities and counties. State law also mandates minimum building codes, which local governments can choose to adopt or adopt later versions of. The City of Beaumont currently operates under the 2021 Building International Codes and the 2020 National Electric Code. The adopted codes are legally and ethically considered to be the minimum criteria to be met for development and improvements. In 2001, the state of Texas required municipalities to adopt standards for residential and commercial buildings. This table is intended to show how we relate to nearby cities. As you can see, Orange and Port Arthur are mostly consistent with our current codes, and Austin will soon implement the 2024 Building Codes. Most surrounding communities also enforce flood damage prevention, zoning, and landscaping requirements similar to us. Next slide. To give a high-level overview of the permit process, the first step to any development in Beaumont is to check your zoning district. If your development or business is a permissible use within that zoning district, then you should schedule a pre-development meeting to discuss your project with city staff. From there, you or your design professional will submit a complete application for a permit through our online permit portal. As your development progresses, you will need to complete the required inspections to ensure code compliance throughout the project to its completion. Once all inspections have been completed, then you will seek a certificate of occupancy, or commonly referred to as a CO. Often, developers and contractors reach out to us about three to four weeks, sometimes less, before their expected completion date to request a temporary certificate of occupancy. In these situations, our building official and deputy building official work proactively with all relevant departments to coordinate inspections and address any outstanding requirements. Our primary goal is to support timely project completion while maintaining safety standards to protect our patrons and this community. Next slide. At this time, I wanted to bring up our deputy building official, Beau Hanson, to discuss the value of a code analysis for developments.
Good afternoon. Good plans, and specifically a good code analysis found on those plans can make or break a project. For instance, it begins with understanding the site. Items like lot lines separation, how far a particular occupancy needs to be within a property. Building separation, if there are multiple buildings on one lot, how far they need to be separated. Fire department access, hydrant location, allowable height, which is based not only on the site, but also several building specifics determine what size building you can have, which leads us to thoroughly understanding the building. What type of material are you using? Things like combustible wood or non-combustible metal, or some combination of the two. Is the building sprinkled? Is there a fire alarm in the building? What about the occupancy? An example I like to give folks often is, you know, there's a big difference between, say, a tax office and a residence, and definitely a big difference in a residence and a nightclub. And all those things need to be considered appropriately when we're looking at the code analysis. But often, contractors want to expect a building to be move-in ready if there's no or little construction that needs to be, to take place for whatever type of business they're looking to do, and that's simply not the case. Then we have to ask the size of the building, the square footage, and that will help us determine how many people can fit in that space, how many exits are required, the configuration of those exits, the total inches required for people to get out of those exits, the door swing of those exits, the lighted path to those exits. All those things are considered when we do our overview of the plans and look at the code analysis. And then lastly, items like total toilets or lavatories in a particular bathroom is all determined on the occupant load. So to summarize, I like to look at it like a three-legged stool when talking about building safety, because it really starts with your design professional, who can think through all these things that I'm talking about here, and many other things, before the contractor mobilizes on the site. The second thing is working with us in environments like our pre-development meeting, which Ms. Stigman will further explain in just a moment. But we want contractors to have all the answers before they get started on their project. That's my goal as a plans examiner and a deputy building official. We want them to have the answers before they mobilize in the field. Then lastly, which leads to the third key leg, which is the contractor responsible for the actual work on the site. If one of these legs is removed, though, the entire approach can become infinitely more complicated. Regrettably, over half of our permitted jobs do not come with plans drawn by a design professional, which often leaves contractors solely responsible for figuring out how to comply with our inspection standards. Knowing this, we are actively working with organizations like the AGC and Home Builders' Association to improve not only the perception of red tape, but cultivate a better partnership as we move forward together.
Thank you, Beau. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Beau. So, for pre-development meetings, it's a resource that the City of Beaumont provides or offers to support developers to streamline their project planning. These meetings are held every Thursday at 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00 a.m. at no cost to the developer. They provide an opportunity to address project requirements early on, help to identify potential challenges, and ensure compliance with city regulations. During these meetings, a multi-team review representing building codes, health, water, planning, engineering, public health, or I'm sorry, public works, economic development, Drainage District Number Six, and Tech Dot collaborates with developers. This comprehensive approach helps reduce delays and fosters efficient project management while maintaining safety and regulatory standards. Additionally, these meetings are recorded, archived, and available to developers upon request, so they may reference it throughout the project. So Beaumont residents and business owners benefit from savings on insurance premiums due to the city's proactive approach to safety and development standards. The City of Beaumont has achieved commendable ISO ratings, including a fire rating of two, a residential rating of four, and a commercial rating of three. These ratings reflect the city's commitment to enhance safety and resiliency of our built environment. Often, developers will go above and beyond the minimum requirements for commercial projects to ensure they receive favorable insurance premiums moving forward. So, for example, a fire sprinkler system may not be a requirement for that specific project. However, when they plan for future maintenance and operations of the structure, the developer finds that the installation of the said system is worth their while to save money in the long run. A rating of one is best in these ratings, and the state average is a six, so Beaumont is performing very well. Additionally, Beaumont participates in the community rating system and currently holds a Class VII rating issued by FEMA. This classification results in a 15% discount on flood insurance premiums for properties located within the special flood hazard areas, and a 5% discount for properties located outside those areas. These achievements demonstrate Beaumont's dedication to reducing risk and supporting affordable insurance options for our community. So there are obviously several factors that determine your insurance premiums, but a city's ISO score is a key factor. We researched and confirmed just how important this is, and found that for the same individual, for two similar homes, one in Beaumont and the other in one of our surrounding cities with a much higher ISO rating, showed a $1,500 difference for insurance premiums on an annual So I wanted to touch on why zoning codes matter. The overall purpose for zoning is to regulate land use density and building standards to ensure orderly development, protect public health and safety, and preserve the character of neighborhoods. I placed a couple examples on the screen. The picture to the left is Houston, and you can see that the multi-development family was basically built on top of the single-family house. And this is an example of why setbacks, floor area ratio, and landscaping requirements matter to give them a buffer to the high-density land uses that surround them. The picture to the right is Kima, and that is a beach house with a roller coaster pretty much placed in their backyard, and that is an example of why specific use permits matter to ensure property owners have a voice to protect their property value and overall quality of life. Articles described that this roller coaster produced vibrations to the property, which could also compromise structural integrity over time, depending on the intensity of the vibrations. So I wanted to give a couple real examples of why development standards and requirements matter. The collapse of the Champlain Towers in Surfside, Florida occurred in 2021. When a 12-story residential condominium partially collapsed, this tragically killed 98 people. The disaster was one of the deadliest building failures in U.S. history. It raised critical questions about building safety, structural integrity, and the oversight of condominium maintenance. Investigations revealed longstanding issues with concrete deterioration and structural damage highlighting the importance of regular inspections and proactive maintenance for aging buildings. It was also revealed that the pool was not built to code, and the water from the pool penetrated the walls and corroded the reinforcing steel. And that is one of the reasons why building codes matter, and more specifically, the pool and spa codes matter. The collapse of this building prompted nationwide scrutiny of building codes and regulations, which led to legislative changes aimed at enhancing safety and preventing similar tragedies. Next slide. So the Station Nightclub Fire occurred in 2003 in West Warwick, Rhode Island, when a pyrotechnics display set off by the band ignited highly flammable soundproofing foam, rapidly engulfing the building in flames. The tragedy was exacerbated by overcrowding inadequate exits and noncompliance with fire safety regulations. So I included a video, but I'll only play a minute and 30 seconds of it, just to keep the workshop going. So there you can see it take flame. You can see the black smoke rolling. The fire claimed 100 lives and injured over 200 others, making it one of the deadliest nightclub fires in U.S. history. Again, this incident led to significant changes in fire safety regulations. So these are codes that are unique to Beaumont. For example, our zoning ordinance. While many surrounding cities have them, they vary from community to community. Earlier this year, Planning secured a grant fund, or grant funding from the GLO for a comprehensive plan update, which will guide future development and ultimately impact the zoning ordinance or our current one. We have an RFP out, and that's expected to close at the end of this month. Our comprehensive plan update is a heavy community engagement process, and it normally takes about 18 months, once we procure a vendor. And the process is to ensure all voices are heard, all opinions are considered, and that the city implements a plan that the citizens desire to have. Additionally, we have overlay districts, such as our Oaks Historic District, which pertains to historic preservation. We have two sign overlay districts, and that covers the MLK Parkway area, Dallin, Gladys, Folsom, Major, and Highway 105 area. Beaumont also has landscaping and screening requirements for all new developments. Landscaping requirements are important to enhance the aesthetics of Beaumont and commonly practiced amongst municipalities, but again, landscaping ordinances are unique to each city. So if the city were to lessen landscaping requirements, just want to paint a mental picture, you will see the aesthetics of development similar to College Street west of I-10, headed out towards Major. Or if you continue to implement landscaping and screening requirements citywide, then you will start to see developments similar to Dallin and Walden citywide. The new O'Reilly Store on College Street is a really good example of why we continue to implement landscaping and screening requirements. If you guys haven't seen it, you should definitely check it out. Lastly, our city is blessed with the resources to ensure code compliance. That is unique to Beaumont. So while we can always use more staff, Beaumont has inspectors that can go out into the field and perform inspections from the beginning of the project to its completion. And thank you to the support of our city manager and also council. Building codes has given the resources to seek continuous education for our building codes team and their inspectors, and ensure code compliance citywide. So these are resources that are key factors to our outstanding residential and commercial ISO ratings. Many of our surrounding cities do not have the said resources. Many of them have one building official and maybe one inspector, if that. When you have minimal resources such as that, it's impossible to ensure code compliance to all projects and properly monitor all steps for code compliance, as these individuals typically wear multiple hats, especially in fast-growing communities. Next. Next. So while I've highlighted code requirements and developments, I always wanted to take the time to share some development tips as well. First is that we're here to serve the community. We're here to serve y'all. If there's ever something you feel should be reported, needed, or need to discuss a project, an idea, please call or email us. I put the contact up in the corner. I wish I blew it up a little bit bigger. It'll be on the very last slide. So my staff is here Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. We don't close down for lunch or anything like that. Planning and community development staff is always available. I know I highlighted this earlier, but I can't stress it enough. Please check your zoning district prior to buying or signing a lease. It's always heartbreaking to my planning staff when they have to break the news that their proposed use is not allowed in certain zoning districts. Third tip is that our online permit portal provides tracking of your permit and inspections. If you are listed on the permit, you will see updates in real time. The applicant, general contractor, owner, and/or tenant should always be listed on every permit. This provides transparency amongst the public and also the private sector. Fourth tip, as discussed earlier, a code analysis produced by your design professional will make your development process so much smoother by giving the contractor the answer key prior to the development. And lastly, the city has an economic development division, and we have incentives available for qualifying projects. So before you kick off your project, definitely give Christina Lowkey a call to discuss. Next slide. And I wanted to wrap this work session up with identifying some opportunities for improvement to the development process. First and foremost, we will work to improve transparency of the development process, such as developing guiding documents, and increase our code education and outreach efforts at a staffing level. For example, recently presented at the Southeast Texas Connection Meeting to discuss zoning requirements and development tips, I would love to continue these efforts throughout our development community and Realtor community, because that's really where everything starts, is with our Realtors. I mentioned annual contractors registration last year, and I'd like to circle back to it. I'll first start with an example of why I'd even consider this for Beaumont. I have the unfortunate privilege to field phone calls from individuals, and many times it's from our senior citizens of this community, that a contractor ran off with their money and never finished their remodel. I'd love to see, or I would look to see that a contractor has their bond on file with us, which is a requirement, and unfortunately, she chose a contractor that was not licensed nor bonded with the city and nor pulled a permit. So I have to give the bad news that she may not get her money back, and then she asks me if there's a contractor that I could recommend to her, and unfortunately, I can't do that either, because then that would be showing bias to contractors. So for all watching, a contractor's bond guarantees that a contractor will complete a project according to contractual terms and legal requirements, providing financial protection to clients if the contractor fails to fulfill their obligations. And that's why it's important to choose bonded contractors. I'd like to explore the idea of implementing an annual contractors registration to ensure annual outreach of code education with our general contractors. Additionally, I would work with IT, our IT staff, to create a website where the contractor registration will automatically populate to the website, displaying the contractor's name and contact information so citizens may navigate to that website to select a licensed and bonded contractor of their choice. And that's to give ease to our community and build confidence in knowing that they are choosing a bonded contractor with the city. This is to serve as a win-win to the community, to ensure quality construction, and to also elevate our registered contractors within the Southeast Texas region. In Southeast Texas, we are hit hard by natural disasters, and I want to ensure that our citizens are not subject to shady contractors. We have so many very good contractors in Southeast Texas, and I want to partner with them to preserve and protect their credibility. Staff has presented this idea to both the AGC and the Home Builders Association, and both parties received the idea of a contractor's registration positively. Lastly, as I prepared this workshop for y'all, it was noticed that we should definitely do a comprehensive review of our Chapter 24 building regulations to identify amendments that reduce development barriers while maintaining public safety standards. I know that there's some areas for improvement there, and I anticipate to bring those amendments to you guys in quarter three of 2025, so hopefully end of summer, early fall, if not earlier than then. Next slide. If you guys have any questions for me, I thank you for your time.
All right. Well, thank you. All right, now we move on to council member comments. So I will begin with Councilman Crenshaw.
No comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Sherwood? You're gonna need to turn your mic on.
Running for city council, I really didn't understand the intricate workings of city staff and all that you do. And I just want to start today off by saying thank you, right? Like, thank you in a major, major way. I appreciate each and every one of you and all that you're doing. I won't be attacking you or assuming mismanagement or negativity off the bat. I'm here to help, and I can't tell you thank you enough. I committed myself to being a no-nonsense, common sense, keep-it-real council member. I'm not interested in sensationalism or performative outrage or feeding into misleading narratives. I want to be clear. I pay taxes, and I want my hard-earned money to be spent appropriately, but I am not naive enough to believe that we can make meaningful improvements without money. This means more business activity, more people that live here. We cannot sustainably make major improvements to our streets, drainage facilities, or increase pay for police and firemen without real understanding of the elephant in the room, which is money. Today, our city is in good financial standing. I am proud to say that, and I will always be working to be fiscally responsible. And for the record, the current tax rate is set for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Williams?
No comment.
Councilman Turner?
I appreciate your sentiments. You know, kind of when I first got on council, it can be that attitude to kind of attack, but I realized the more you work together, the more you really get things done, you know? So I just, again, shut it open door. Me and Chris, the four-year seniors, if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask us, man. Feel free to ask the city manager, and if he doesn't answer, then you hold him accountable. So I think, you know, we just want to keep that sentiment and really work together to kind of make Beaumont to where it needs to be, and I appreciate the support and the recommendation from Mayor Protem and Councilman Durio. Since you're the senior on council, I'm okay with you having my park. I'll park in the back, and you can park in the front, man.
That's wrong. That's wrong. Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Hilliard?
No comment.
Councilman Durio?
Yeah, what LaDonna and AJ said. Also, June, y'all presentation about the CO, thank you, good job. And Demi, a good presentation, very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Public Works. This is City Manager Boone.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I just would like to give the council and you, Mayor, an update. Just a week ago, the city was rated by one of the big three rating agencies, Standard and Poor's. They rated our waterworks and sewer utility system. These big rating agencies do this every two or three years, especially when a city issues debt. And just last week, a week ago today, the city received its rating from Standard and Poor's. That rating was, the rating of A was affirmed, but the outlook moved from negative to stable. So that's a plus, and that's a positive for the city. So that will help the city improve its credit ratings or creditworthiness, and it will also play a role in lowering the borrowing costs when we need to borrow money for water and wastewater projects going forward. What that will do in turn is lower the rates that the citizens or the ratepayers have to pay in order to pay off that debt. So this rating from just a week ago is a move in the right direction for the city, and I just wanted the council and the mayor to know that. And also, today we heard from our city's independent auditor, and we heard about our clean audit, unmodified audit. That was no surprise to us, but I just want to thank the finance team. Ms. Bridget Evick worked very hard, along with other staff in the finance department. Ms. Evick, if you would stand, please. There were some of her team members here earlier, but I just want to thank them for all of their hard work on the audit for fiscal year 2024. The entire finance department is a very hard-working department and being short-staffed as well. So thank you all in finance for what you do for the city. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
I would like to also thank the finance team, the accounting team specifically within finance, for their hard work on the annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, sir. City Mayor?
I'd like to piggyback on the audit finding. That was great work, an unmodified, clean audit, what no findings is rare for cities to achieve. And you achieved all of them, so that's really a great accomplishment. So congratulations to you, this council as a city, and being able to achieve that. And June mentioned this rating went from negative to stable. We asked for that rating from Standard and Poor's. We went to Standard and Poor's and petitioned to them to look at our rating for utilities. And we did that, and we went through several rating calls as a team. We did do it as a team, and they came back with that improved rating. So that's a good deal, too. So we're steadily working to make this a fiscally feasible, responsible city constantly in what we're doing here. That's our goal. It's been a goal since I've gotten here, and every year it's been, and our budgetary goal, it's been a goal. Also, I'd like to mention our, this week we have a workshop. We have, and this is the kickoff of our budget season, and this includes the council. You start your role in the budget. Staff has been working, directors have been working, putting things together, but we start that out Thursday with a CIP discussion, where we go over every proposed project that the city will have, whether it's water, sewer, parks, streets, drains, et cetera, to be able to discuss, and you'll have, be able to look at that. And then at some point, you'll come up with a final proposed capital improvement program that you will approve, to say this is the part, these are the projects for the next five years the city's going to focus on. It's a change, and it's a changeable thing. It's a moving target, so things change on it, but you'll start working on that. Also, in that meeting, I would like for you to come with your, things you'd like to see as far as your goals and priorities for the budget year. We need that. We need that in helping to prepare this budget, the things that are important to you, the things you want to see in this budget. So come with a list of goals. I don't have to tell AJ that. He'll have two pages when he shows up, but things that are important to you with your priorities for the budget going forward. And that'll be a part of that discussion, where we'll have a bit of a roundtable. And if someone can be here, you can give it to me, give me those things, and we can have those discussions. We'll continue to contact you. My office will just set up meetings with different directors to where you'll be able to have one-on-one, face-to-face meeting with directors and be able to ask those, any questions you'd like to have, and have any discussions you'd like to have with them. We set those meetings up. It gives you that opportunity to do that, and we look forward to that, and you'll be able to get more information and get information from them directly. You know, you get copies of the budget books and things like that, and during those meetings, they will share information with you, et cetera. So it's a great way to gain knowledge, great way to find out the workings of the city, what's going on out there, and have one-on-one conversation. And thanks, that's all. And congratulations, Councilman Turner, on being Mayor Protem. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Well, and I just want to, again, welcome all four new council members for their first three-hour meeting. And for all the great questions, certainly there's a lot of information to take in as you get on council and even after you've been here for a while, and you certainly need that. I just want to also report, if you hadn't gotten calls on council, I figure some of you may, on the Calder going east and west underneath Interstate 10, it's down to One Lane. And I've had some calls, because certainly it's going to create some traffic problems there, because we have the St. Anne's traffic, and a lot of people are moving down Calder because of Laurel Bridge. That is not something that the city did. However, talking to Dave Collins, who's over the projects with TechStot, he assured me that it was necessary for them to do that. They are laying new boxes for drainage all along the, all the new service road, which is clearly going to be changing somewhat, too, as they took in that property north of Calder. So they said to expect it to be closed down to One Lane of traffic each direction for the next several months. So I'm just, I wanted to relay that information, because it is frustrating for people, and I know it has generated phone calls for me. And certainly the audit and the new lower bond, appreciate that. And I appreciate all the hard work that staff does in terms of preparing for our meetings and getting us the information and answering all the question and the thoroughness of it. And with that, we are now recessed into executive session, and we will be meeting in the large conference room in the executive suite. So.